Okay, it's seven o'clock according to my computer. So I will call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. This is City of Tiger Planning Commission Public Meeting. Today is March 14, 2022. Happy Pi Day. Doring, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, President Hu?
Here.
Vice President Jackson?
Present.
Commissioner Brandt?
Present.
Commissioner Miranda? Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Shook?
Present.
Commissioner K. Seven? And Commissioner Watson?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doring. Thank you, Commissioners. Next item on our agenda is Communications. So the Planning Commission and the City Council had a joint meeting on March 8, and we discussed Tiger made co-project regarding the city's employment lands, availability, and how to best use them. I think every Planning Commissioner attended that joint meetings. So it was a very lively and useful and informative discussion. So thank you, Commissioners, for joining the City Council for the meetings. Commissioners, do you have any other communications you would like to share with the Planning Commission? If you do, please raise your virtual hand. I see none, so let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Considerational minutes. So Doring has circulated a draft minutes from our February 28 meetings. After reviewing, Commissioners, if you have any addition, deletion, corrections to the draft minutes that you would like to bring to our attention, please raise their virtual hand. Okay, I see none, so I would declare the draft minutes from our February 28 meeting approved. All right, let's move on to the public hearing, the main event of the evening. So before I open the public meeting, I would just like to give a brief description of how the hearing will proceed. First, the staff will give their staff report. Then the applicant will make their presentation. After that, we will take public testimony. To the members of the public, if you would like to provide testimony, please call 503-966-4101. That number again is 503-966-4101. As indicated by the public hearing notice on the city's website, the phone line will be open between 7:15 PM to 8:00 PM. You will need to call in during this time period in order to secure a place in the phone queue for testimony. After the public testimony, staff will be given time for any follow-up or response to testimony. The applicant is then given an opportunity to respond to all testimony. All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing. So the name of the applicant in this case is Hall Boulevard Land LLC, and the applicant's representative is Adamson Holding LLC. And this case is on Cedar Brook Annexation and Site Development Review, and the case number is ZCA 2021-1 and SDR 2021-1. And the proposal, the applicant is requesting approval to annex approximately 2.53 acres into the city of Tiger. The proposal includes a site development review to construct a 182-bed assisted living facility. Improvements include parking, landscaping, common open space, and other associated site improvements. So before I read the required statement, I'd just like to provide brief procedure history of this case. So the Planning Commission have voted to continue this hearing twice. The first one was on January 10th, up on the request of the applicant. And on that day, we did not hear any staff report or a presentation from the applicant, nor did we receive any public comments. The second hearing that we continued was on February 28th. And during that hearing, soon after the staff started their presentation, we were informed that there was a technical difficulties associated with King's Meeting app. So we had a brief pause to the meeting, and then after waiting a while, we could not resolve the technical difficulties. So the Planning Commission again voted to continue the hearing. Again, tonight, even though the staff started their presentation, tonight I expect the staff will restart the presentation anew. So that's a brief procedure history of the hearing. So now I have some required statements that I need to read. First, the applicable review of substantive criteria are those listed on Page 1 of the staff report, available online on the city's website. Two, testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable review criteria listed on Page 1 of the staff report or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Land Use Regulation that are believed to apply to the decision. Three, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statement or evidence sufficient to afford a decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. And four, to receive a copy of the decision and maintain your standing to appeal, please provide your contact information directly to the staff contact for this case, if you have not done so already. The staff contact information is on the printed notice and on the public hearing notice for this case, located at www.tiger-or.gov-publichearings, one word, "public hearings." All right, so here are some procedure items. Abstentions or conflict. Commissioners, if you wish to abstain or declare a conflict interest, please raise your virtual hand. I see none. Ex parte contacts. Commissioners, if you wish to report any ex parte contacts, which are oral or written communication about a hearing with persons other than the city staff or city attorneys, please raise your virtual hand. And again, I just want to report that Vice President Jackson and I had email and meeting with staff regarding the logistic of this public hearing, but we have never discussed anything substantive about this case. Commissioner, if you have visited the site or proposal, please raise your virtual hand. Okay, so the Commissioners who have visited the site are President Hu, Commissioner Shook, Commissioner Brandt, and Vice President Jackson. Thank you, Commissioner. Please blow your hand. And next question is to the members of the public. If you wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the Commission to hear the case, please again call the public testimony number 503-966-4101 and stay so when we take public testimony. All right, finally, let's move on to the staff report. I would like to introduce staff member, Associate Planner Agnes Lindor, to present the staff report. Good evening, Agnes.
Good evening, President Hu, Commissioners. My name is Agnes Lindor, Associate Planner, and the item before you tonight is the Cedar Brook Annexation and Site Development Proposal. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Perfect. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so the site is shown here shaded in this gray color. It's located just south of Hall Boulevard, east of 92nd Avenue, and at the terminus of Montage Lane. The site is made up of three lots totaling 2.53 parcels or acres, and the current zoning under Washington County is transit-oriented, R18 through 24. The proposed zoning for the city of Tiger would be mixed-use residential 1. The site borders townhouse development that's located to the west of the site and single detached houses to the south and east, and then obviously Hall Boulevard to the north. So the two applications before you this evening are an annexation, which is again three lots, approximately 2.53 acres, and a site development review for a four-story assisted living care facility with 182 beds and associated common open space, parking lot, and landscaping. So this is just the general site plan of what is proposed. Hall Boulevard here is to the north. And Montage Lane, there's a cul-de-sac that's proposed at the terminus. There's a driveway that comes off of Montage and goes up to Hall. And then this is generally where the building is located. So the bottom floor of the building is the parking area. And there's some parking along the west or east part of the site as well. So since the last staff report that was recommending denial, I wanted to highlight some of the changes to the site plan that were made from the previous iteration. So the first one is the public cul-de-sac that's shown on Montage Lane. Previously, it was shown as a private hammerhead turnaround. For this area, the loading area, the building was moved closer to the street in the previous site plan, not allowing enough room for an S4 screen to be located on the site, and it pushed the S4 screen into the public right-of-way, which was not allowed. So the applicant has moved the building back to accommodate the S4 screen of the loading area. Number three is also a building setback. Previously, it was exceeding the maximum street-side setback of 20 feet, but now with the public cul-de-sac, it meets the maximum 20-foot setback. So number five is the eight-foot multi-use path because a full-street connection is not required. A pedestrian connection is required. So the applicant is showing a public access easement eight-foot multi-use path that goes from Montage Lane through the site to Hall Boulevard. And lastly is the clear vision requirements. Area requirements were not met on Hall, and now they are met. So for the record, I did want to state that I received a phone call from Mr. Jim Long asking about the comment period deadline. I also received several public comments up until the hearing today. All of the public comments that I have received have been forwarded on to you. You should have all of them prior to this meeting. And then lastly, there were some staff report edits that were provided from President Hu and Commissioner Jackson. Most of these were just leftover Scrivener errors, like saying that the standard is not met or this criterion is not met. So those will all be cleaned up, as well as there was a condition that was in the findings but wasn't carried over to the conditions of approval. So all of those will be taken care of and in the Planning Commission draft recommendation to City Council. So the staff finds that the annexation meets the approval criteria in the Tigered Community Development Code, the Tigered Comprehensive Plan, the Metro Code, and state statutes, and that the proposal provides detailed information on how all of the applicable site development approval criteria and standards are met or will be met through conditions of approval. So based on that and based on the applicant's materials and staff review, staff recommends approval of the annexation and approval of the site development review subject to conditions of approval in the staff report. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Agnes. So Commissioners, if you have any questions for staff regarding their report, please raise your virtual hands. You also have a chance to ask questions after the applicant presentation and before deliberations. So if you want to wait, that's fine, but if you have any question for Agnes or staff, please raise your hand. Vice President Jackson, please.
Yes, thank you. I had a couple kind of general questions before we get into the applicant's presentation. The first was, so my understanding is typically site development review is not a Type 3 decision. And so I was curious, is it purely a function of it being attached to the annexation request that we're even seeing it, or is there another factor I'm forgetting about?
Yes, that's correct, because it's running concurrently with the application. So if they were applied for separately, it would have been just a Type 2 review.
Okay, thank you. And my other question was related to the wetlands on-site. I want to make sure I get the wording accurate here. So my understanding is the wetland on-site is considered jurisdictional but not Tigered significant. And I was just curious if that is mainly a function of it being currently outside city limits? Or, in other words, if the site had already been part of Tigered for the last 10 years, say, would that wetland have been considered a Tigered significant wetland?
No, so basically, when it's jurisdictional wetland, it means that the city of Tigered doesn't have jurisdiction over it, and the applicant would need to pursue permits with like the Army Corps and DSL, Department of State Lands, for any kind of fill or any kind of modification to the wetland. The Tigered significant wetlands are identified through the Comprehensive Plan update, and they're placed on our inventory.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Brand, please go ahead.
Thank you. My question is regards to Southwest 92nd Avenue and Southwest Montage Lane. My understanding is that the idea is that 92nd will be the access for this facility. That road, recollection serves me, does not seem like it's wide enough for two lanes of parking and two lanes of travel. And second concern about that is the intersection between Montage Lane and 92nd is almost the size of a regular driveway. In fact, when I was trying to find where 92nd was, I thought that was the driveway to those townhomes. My question is, is 92nd going to be widened? And B, will it serve as access for emergency vehicles in two lanes of traffic and parking? Because it pairs that those condominiums and townhouses, they park on the street.
So I'm going to have Jeremy Tamargo address that.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jeremy Tamargo, Assistant City Engineer. So yes, Southwest 92nd Avenue, the applicant will be providing half-street improvements, including dedication of right-of-way. So it'll be 27 feet of right-of-way from the center line. So it will meet our local street standards in terms of both the street width as well as curb, planar strip, and sidewalk. So yes, Southwest 92nd will be widened. In terms of emergency vehicle access and circulation, the applicant has provided an auto-turn plan showing how that circulation will be provided to and through the site, and that's Sheet C103 in the Civil Set.
Jeremy, my question specifically is, between property address 9475 and 9488, I don't see where you find 27 feet of road without actually modifying the building or bringing the curb right up to the... I mean, yeah, I don't see how you're going to fit that in there. From my site visit, I don't see 27 feet plus. Minimum, what's it, five feet setback from the building to the edge of the sidewalk?
So the applicant is showing on their plans the full half-street improvements. So I could direct you to the specific Civil Sheet if that would be helpful. So that is, you can look on both your Sheets 104 as well as 106 and 107. And the Civil Sheet will show those improvements meeting our local street standards.
Thank you very much, Jeremy. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Jeremy, wow, I have you here. So I have a question for you as well, Jeremy. So one of our approval criteria is the improved street improvement, and it says, "No development shall occur unless the street adjacent to the development meet the standard of this chapter." And later on, it says, "The standard chapter includes standards specification adopted by City Engineer." So when you were listing the approval criteria for Hall Boulevard, which I understand is under ODOT jurisdiction, you mentioned that it complied among other things, ODOT's Highway Design Manual. So is this your position that the ODOT Highway Design Manual is one of the development standards for the Hall? I'm just trying to understand why you bring the ODOT's manual into this.
Yeah, so ODOT is the agency that is responsible both for the ownership and maintenance of Hall Boulevard. And so that is why, even though the land use decision is going through the city of Tigered, the actual facility permitting for that right-of-way along Hall Boulevard, it is an ODOT facility. So the improvements will be reviewed and permitted through ODOT. And through the land use decision, we're making sure the standards are either meeting or exceeding what is required in our city code and TSB for those improvements along the Hall Boulevard frontage.
So the applicant doesn't really... For the purpose of this application, the applicant really doesn't have to meet the ODOT's Highway Design Manual? Is that my understanding correctly?
Well, so during the review process, right, so ODOT has provided preliminary comments. The applicant has met with ODOT, right, to understand what those requirements will be in terms of their actual permitting of the facility. And so, yeah, yes, the answer is during the actual permitting process, that's when the ODOT standards will be applicable. But those preliminary comments have been included, you know, in the ODOT response letter as to what those standards the applicant will need to meet during the permitting process.
Okay, so this might be outside of the applicable approval criteria, and I apologize if that's the case. So because when I was going through the Highway Design Manual, ODOT's, it does say that pedestrian crossing should happen no frequent than every quarter mile. And so I'm just wondering, the ODOT Design Manual, is that just a recommendation? For those frequency of crosswalk, it's not really a standard or requirement?
I could say that I'm not specifically versed in the ODOT standards. So I think that would be a question better directed to the ODOT reviewer than me at this time. But I'm sure that will be addressed through their plan review and through their permitting process that the applicant is meeting all of the standards in the ODOT manual.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So I just have one more question for Agnes. So for typical hotel room without a kitchen, just like no kitchen, that would not be considered a dwelling unit, right? As defined by the Development Code? Okay.
Correct.
All right. So I see Commissioner Shook has a question. Commissioner Shook, please go ahead.
Thank you. Late hand raised there, President Hu. Sorry about that. My question is, and good evening, Agnes. My question is about parking. And I know there was... They're not held... The applicant is not held to any kind of parking standard as it relates to multifamily. But I couldn't figure out what is the standard that is applied? So, and to determine that the number of spaces that they have is correct. Could you enlighten me a little bit about that?
Yeah, so this case is a little bit different because we apply apartment standards to assisted living facilities. In this case, the proposal doesn't actually have dwelling units as defined by the code, meaning that they have permanent sleeping, cooking, and sanitation facilities. So it's missing the cooking, permanent cooking facilities. So for apartments, we would apply... The number of spaces is based on the number of units and also how many bedrooms they have. So in this case, that standard wouldn't be applicable. So there isn't a minimum or a maximum parking standard for this type of development.
So the applicant could have put forth a project that had zero parking spaces?
Per the code, without dwelling units, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll have a chance to ask applicant, I mean, staff question later on again. So don't worry about if you still have questions, and you might have questions. So thank you, Agnes, for now. Thank you, Jeremy. So at this time, it's applicant's presentation. At this time, I asked the applicant to present your case. Please state your name and title. Address is not necessary. And please limit your presentation to 20 minutes. And I believe Doring will be keeping track of time. And Doring, please give the applicant a five-minute warning if they need that much time. So thank you very much.
Yes, will do.
Good evening. Please start your presentation.
Evening. My name is Tim Taylor. I'm the applicant with Adamson Holdings, and I partnered with Mosaic Management to do the Cedar Brook development. First, I wanted to thank staff for being patient with myself and our team for the past five years while we've been contemplating a project on this site. Before I introduce our team and do our formal presentation, based on the feedback that we've gotten from the public in the neighborhood, I briefly wanted to just discuss the history of the site and the alternatives, what we looked at. The assisted living facility that is proposed under the code in Tigered is what I deem as the least impact with traffic that could be put on that site. I could... We technically, or another developer could technically put 140 apartment units on that site at a height of 75 feet or up to 75 feet. If I stayed within Washington County, I could do up to 60 townhomes on that. And going through this entire process, we decided that with the traffic that would be generated with the assisted living facility, that was the best use for that site. And also to provide much-needed, and we can debate it later, but much-needed housing... much needed, and we can debate it later, but much needed housing for seniors in the community. The other item that we were very cognizant of is that this property is located in opportunity zone. And really what that means is is that they encourage economic development in areas that are economically depressed. And this is one of those zones. And so what we decided to do is balance those needs with the impact of the surrounding area that we would be having. And so I don't know any other development that we could be proposing, or I could be proposing on that site that would one, create the employment opportunities that are desperately needed to coincide with the opportunity zone. And the other reason is, is that aligning with the Washington Square Regional Center, which basically is is leaning towards more compact, higher density development. And so I just want, you know, staff and the commissioners and the neighbors to understand that over the past five years, we have carefully analyzed and identified what could theoretically be put on that site and what would work with also translating into the least impact that that we could possibly do provided by code. The other thing I wanted to briefly talk about was that the that the site has been vacant for so long that we just decided that at this time, the assisted living facility was going to be the best best option for the for the surrounding area. Briefly, I'll introduce our our staff and our team. For Mosaic Management, I have Jeremy Schoenfelder. We have our wetland consultant, David Monin with Terrace Science. We have our transportation, transportation engineer, Christine Connolly with Kittleson Engineering. We have our civil engineer, Chris Kittridge with Kittridge Engineering. And then we have our architecture team with Aaron Clark, Brian Lind, and finally, Sam, who will be presenting our our project formally. So with that said, I'll go ahead and give it to Sam.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sam Thomas. I am a senior land use specialist with Lenity Architecture. And we're going to get a screen going for the rest of our team before we proceed.
It's coming out of your time, so.
Well, I don't know.
On the first slide.
So as we introduce, this is the Cedar Brook Assisted Living and Memory Care Facility. Is everybody able to see the presentation screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can. We can see it.
Commissioners, can you confirm that you can hear us?
Yes. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Brad. I can hear you just fine.
Oh, we have 159 assisted living suites. It's a mix of one, two and studio apartments. There's 22 memory care suites with 33 beds. These include shared common spaces, dining activity, enclosed courtyards and walking paths around the site. This will also be a state licensed facility. A little bit about Mosaic Management, they own and operate several senior care residence residences. They're based in Salem, and they're very excited to provide a much needed senior housing option for area residents and families. The typical resident profile is a senior in their 80s. Some of them experience symptoms of Alzheimer's and dementia on the memory care side. Overall, they're in relatively good physical health. Daily operations include serving nutritious meals, indoor physical and wellness activities, safe environment and secure environment for the seniors and their staff available on site 24/7/365. This is a proposed site plan. I wanted to correct one comment that I heard is that there will be no connection between Southwest 92nd Avenue and Hall Boulevard. The new connection will be the extension of Montage Lane as a cul-de-sac, as a public cul-de-sac with street improvements such as sidewalks. The main access to the site is directly from Southwest Hall Boulevard. Here's a few interior pictures of the typical units and suites that Mosaic Management provides. Here's just a sampling of some typical floor plans that may include assisted living, memory care and for the sweet mix that we're proposing. I just want to give you a few exterior renderings. These are views along Southwest Hall Boulevard. This is the main entrance with the entry to the underground parking and the covered portico share drop off for the assisted living side. Here's a wider shot of the front of the building looking southwest across Hall Boulevard. Here's some additional assisted living entry exterior renderings. And then also further west along Hall Boulevard looking southeast. These are the exterior renderings of the corner of Southwest Hall Boulevard and 92nd. And then we also have the memory care portico share drop off area. And we wanted to discuss the neighbor concerns that we've heard to date via public comments. So the height of the building, the proposed height is 949 feet six inches. The MUR one allowed height is up to 75 feet. Comment was submitted that this would be our proposed project is similar in height to Lincoln Center Towers on Greenberg Road. That's not true. The we are well below 12 stories in height. Regarding parking, Mosaic, they operate multiple facilities and they have five in Oregon that have similar parking space ratios. The proposed parking we're providing is sufficient and in line with similar facilities. Here's a mosaic management property parking ratio breakdown. We have a sampling of other Oregon mosaic properties that are currently in operation compared against the Cedar Brook Senior Living that you're seeing today. You can see in the highlighted section for Cedar Brook, we are pretty much in the middle of the ratios range between 37 and a half percent to 59.3%. The ratio of beds to parking spaces is 47.9%. And these are all, all the facilities provide enough parking onsite to meet the needs of the community. Parking spaces have always been and are more than adequate at comparable facilities. There's no on-street parking needed on this site or in other locations that Mosaic has properties. There are a few residents that have cars. We estimate about 5% at most from practical experience and observation of residents and assisted living owner have personal vehicles onsite. And obviously, due to memory care residents' mental capacity, they do not drive or own personal vehicles. Parking generated by staff is the the main generator of parking. There's very few daily visitors. We expect approximately 51 maximum staff onsite, and that includes staff during shift change. And some of them will also use public transit and carpooling. So what makes this a little bit different from other mosaic sites is it does have access to public transit. There's Tri-Met Line 76. And there's a current stop in front of the proposed development on Hall, Southwest Hall Boulevard. So this is an urban facility and, you know, this is a little bit different from some of the other properties. So the this provides other opportunities for employees to commute to work. And we expect some staff to use public transit available. So traffic on and around the site, this facility will have a van to take residents to appointments, shopping, local excursions. We do not expect on-street parking around the neighborhood due to this development. Likewise, so on Montage Lane, the cul-de-sac extension, there would be no street parking along that cul-de-sac. Loading areas will be screened from the neighbors. There's going to be a landscape buffer between the driveway down to the lower parking and then landscaping in front of the loading area. Delivery vehicles and garbage trucks will access directly from Hall. Refuge pickup will actually occur within the underground parking area. And comparatively, this proposed development generates low traffic compared to multifamily with, if you could build 140 multifamily units, that could be allowed in this current, the proposed zone after annexation. Regarding pedestrian safety on 92nd and Montage, street improvements will be developed along with this proposed development. We'll be adding sidewalks, lighting on all right away frontages where they don't currently exist now. Street improvements will be new connections from Southwest 92nd Avenue and Southwest Hall Boulevard where they don't currently exist. Public pedestrian access easement will go through the site between Southwest Montage and Hall Boulevard. And there will be no on-street parking on Southwest Hall Boulevard or Southwest Montage Lane. So the proposal is not going to create heavy traffic along 92nd or Montage. The vast majority of the site traffic will come from South of Southwest Hall Boulevard and enter the covered parking garage that's near the driveway access to Hall Boulevard. We only expect approximately 5% of site traffic to and from Montage Lane to the site. Montage Lane's proposed facility will have just two trips, one in and one out during the AM and three trips, one in and two out during PM peak hour traffic, according to our traffic study. So we don't consider this heavy traffic. To give you a comparison for an alternative development, if this property was to be annexed, the site is allowed up to 440 minorized family, multifamily units in the MUR one zone. This would generate 762 daily trips, which is 50% more than the current assisted living and memory care proposal with 504 daily trips. Regarding neighborhood compatibility and noise, like Tim mentioned, this is in the Washington Square Regional Center. They, this updated plan and visions, higher density development mixed with high quality public transit. So we feel like we're satisfying that. Senior housing provides a soft transition between adjacent residential and Southwest Hall Boulevard traffic. And shift changes for staff occur at off-peak hours. And seniors are quiet neighbors. Regarding the dwelling unit definitions, as was asserted by Agnes in the staff report and correspondence with the Commissioners, these are not considered dwelling units. They do not include kitchens for purposes of the city code definition of a dwelling unit. There's no permanent cooking facilities in either the assisted living or memory care. All meals are served at a common dining room. The provision for cooking could be something that's removable like a microwave. And typically, the microwave is is not included in the room. And then common meals are provided for all residents as part of their monthly feed. So the facility meets all state standards for licensing regarding what is needed as far as licensing in assisted living or memory care facility. The kitchen area is not required to have permanent cooking facilities. They must have a removable, disconnectable cooking appliance, which would be like a hot plate or a microwave. So there has to be an electrical outlet, but there's no requirement for a permanent cooking facility such as a stove. So in that case, it makes sense that the the AL and MC units are not are not considered dwelling units under the City of Tiger Municipal Code. And and other requirements of apartments would be like private open space that's directly accessible from the interior of a dwelling unit. And that's not something that would could be designed in this project. So vehicle and bike parking requirements, you know, would not apply as Agnes explained for apartment standards. And because 95% of the residents don't have cars and no one's going to be riding a bicycle as well. So the primary parking demand is for staff. So an example of why the dwelling unit definition applied here makes no sense is that we do have less than five or 5% or less of the assisted living residents have cars, no memory care residents have cars. This is just a snippet from the Tiger Municipal Code regarding the apartment dwelling standards. Parking parking ratios based on the size and number of bedrooms. I'm going to turn it over to our attorney, Wendy Kellington.
Good evening, members of the Commission. Wendy Kellington, attorney representing the applicant. There were three objections that were raised in a letter from the opponent's attorney dated March the 12th. One of them objected to the process whereby you opened the hearing, you had technical difficulties and you continued it to a date in time certain. And I want to assure you that there's a longstanding legal principle that says that when you open a hearing, you continue it to a date in time certain. That doesn't require new notice for the practical reason that you're going to have things that come up, whether it's a technological problem or some long hearing where you need to continue. You're not hamstring having to give new notice every time. So that really is not an issue. You had an objection that, you know, applying the federal constitution somehow violates Oregon's needed housing statutes. Nothing could be further from the truth. The needed housing statutes are furthered by local governments that impose conditions that are constitutional, not ones that are known to be unconstitutional doing imposing a condition as this particular letter suggested was being requested would be contrary to the needed housing statutes, which forbid unreasonable cost and delay. And the the final attorney objection had to do with, well, you could probably evade the constitutional requirement that would not allow you to demand an exaction of a public street through the subject property by just calling it a private street, but still allowing the public to use it. And I probably don't need to go into great detail to convince you that that kind of shell game has never served any municipality well and wouldn't serve the city of Tigard here. The 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 standard is if there is an exaction for some public benefit, whether you call it public or private, it's still subject to the constitutional standard and staff got it 100% correct that there simply isn't any basis upon which the city could justify a demand for a cut through street through this subject property. So the next thing that we're going to talk about is neighborhood compatibility concerns, and Sam's going to talk about that.
Hello, Sam Thomas again. So regarding neighborhood compatibility, we feel this design complements the adjacent residences in their style and character. And it's consistent with the height of adjacent development. Here's some views of existing townhomes on Southwest 92nd near Hall Boulevard. Here's a view looking south, further south on Southwest 92nd toward heading towards Montage Lane. This is kind of at the intersection of 92nd and Montage Lane looking east. And this is a project that's just around the corner Terrace Glen that has a similar height. So in summary, staff has recommended approval. This proposal meets all approval standards. This proposal provides a needed housing type for Tigard. And it provides additional jobs to the local economy. Public infrastructure will be installed in an underserved area such as sidewalks, streetlights and public pathways. And we respectfully request your approval to move forward with this important project. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you applicants. So Commissioners, if you have questions for the applicant, please raise your virtual hand. Thank you. if you have questions for the applicant, please raise your virtual hand. Thank you.
Hello? So, we can't hear the commissioners talking?
Can you hear us now? If you would turn off screen sharing, I guess they can't hear me, so that...
Sorry, we're not able to hear you currently. We're trying to work on that.
Can you hear us now? Sam, can you hear us?
Okay. Okay.
We got you. Thank you.
You can hear us now, Sam?
Yeah, sorry. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, now commissioners have some questions for you. So, I'm just going to, uh, call, call out. So, Commissioner Brand, please go ahead with your question.
Thank you. I'm still a little confused about what the purpose of Ninety Second and Montage Lane is going to be. Because I didn't understand that there's going to be underground entrance into the facility for emergency services and garbage trucks and freight delivery. Does that mean it's a through, they, they go through the front and out the back and use Ninety Second to leave the property? Or is Ninety Second not going to get pushed through at all?
So, Southwest Ninety Second is going to be improved as a half-street improvement up to Southwest Hall Boulevard. I don't have the plans on you. So, circulation for vehicles is going to be, you just want to hold it up. Circulation is going to be from Southwest Hall Boulevard and then around to the loading area through the private drive. And then it would go to pick up refuse in an underground, going down into the lower parking garage. They'll service the refuse bins and then come back out up through Hall Boulevard. So, the, the underground parking has full circulation to get between Hall Boulevard and the loading areas and then back out.
Okay. So, is, so my, I guess the question I still haven't answered to, will Ninety Second turn into a two-way street where people can enter and leave the neighborhood making both right and left turns? And then also, what do you mean by half-street improvement?
So, with the Tigard street standards, to answer the last question, a half-street improvement is just adjacent to the property boundary. It's a widening of additional right-of-way. So, when, if, if the other properties were to develop i- in a different way, they would have to dedicate a certain amount to meet the local street standard. But Southwest Ninety Second is not going to be connected to Hall with a new street there. The reason for the Southwest Montage Lane extension is because, because there's an existing street that dead ends that needs to be extended as a new public right-of-way. That was a lot of the back and forth in redesign that we had gone through with staff.
So, okay, to be clear, so then no one will be able to leave the neighborhood using Ninety Second?
No.
And or enter the neighborhood?
From, so there's, there's two segments. There's the northern section of Southwest Ninety Second adjacent to the development. There's also Ninety Second that goes further south. So, the Montage Lane currently has kind of a, almost like a cul-de-sac where you could go either right to Montage where it dead ends, or you could continue north. But there is a current dead end at Ninety Second and Hall. There's just a, it just dead ends short of the connection there. So, that will not be fully connected. It's just the improvements along Southwest Hall Boulevard and the property frontage, and then on Southwest Montage Lane for the cul-de-sac extension.
Okay. So, okay, the answer is no, it doesn't connect. Thank you. And I understand the cul-de-sac. So, thank you for your explanation. I appreciate that.
No problem.
Thank you, Commissioner Brand. Sam, would you mind lowering your virtual hands?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any more questions for the applicant? I have one question, if you don't mind. So, the eighty percent, twenty percent side trip estimate between Hall and Montage was, was provided in the May nineteen twenty twenty Kedelson memo. So, and, but in your recent response on March ninth, you, you seem to change that number to ninety-five, to five percent. So, can you confirm which one of those numbers are actually accurate? And can you actually just, if you don't mind, walk me through the process in which this eighty, not twenty percents or ninety-five, five percent was determined? Because the Kedelson memo only have one sentence, albeit a very long sentence, dedicated to this eighty, twenty percent discussion. But I, if, if you could just, like, if I'm a math teacher, if you would just show me how you reached that number, I, I really appreciate it.
Christine Connolly with Kedelson and Associates. Hopefully, I'll do my best to give some clarification to that point. The traffic study actually shows five percent estimated site traffic out through the cul-de-sac to Ninety Second. There's fifteen percent that we anticipate coming up northbound on Greenberg Road. But we expect that that would come around via Hall Boulevard. Due, the way the site is laid out, that will give them more direct access to the parking and, and the front entryway to the assisted living. And just generally speaking, those percentages are derived based on existing travel patterns in the area as well as engineering judgment.
Okay. Can, can you talk about the fifteen percent again? I didn't quite get the Greenberg part. Sorry.
Yeah. So, um, so I think, I think there was some confusion about the study, and that's where the eighty, twenty came about in some of the public comments. But, um, but there's actually, we're only projecting that five percent will exit via the cul-de-sac down, you know, through the neighborhood, probably at most. We just wanted to account for the possibility of somebody deciding to go that way. But the fifteen percent is arriving via Greenberg, so headed north-ish on Greenberg Road, making a right turn onto Hall Boulevard and entering via the main access on Hall Boulevard.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Thank you. And one more, one more question. So, I'm glad to see during your presentation that you, you stated that Hall is an urban high, state highways, and you anticipate a lot of your employees will actually take advantage of the public transit. So, during, the staff reports that you have extensive, extensive discussion with ODOT about the Hall design improvements. So, I'm just curious, during those discussions, had the possibility of putting a crosswalk in Hall ever come up?
To, to my knowledge, that has not been brought up by ODOT or the city. So, so we haven't had discussions about that, no.
Okay. So, since, since it's going to be a wider street and there will be bus stop, you know, right in front of property and across the street, that busy street, would you be open to considering adding a crosswalk if it's not use, if we don't impose that, even if we don't impose as an approval condition or, I mean, something that we will consider?
Yeah. So, I think we'd have to coordinate with ODOT on that point. I'm, I, you know, since it hasn't been brought up, I haven't been able to look into what other issues may arise providing such a crossing. I know there's left turn access to both streets, and that's often an issue with, with the pedestrian crossing because you're putting them right in front of the left turns. So, so I think at this point, it's, it's not a consideration due to that. I'm not sure if the city can shed any more light on that.
Well, I'm, I think I tried to ask Jeremy, that's a, a street standard, but like, my understanding is not. So, I think all we can do is ask nicely. So, so please consider it. Thank you. Commissioners, any more questions? Okay, we have no question at this point. So, we will come back after public comments, and so we may have more questions. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So, now we are moving to the public testimony section of the hearing. So, right now, I will be asking for public testimony. If you wish to testify, please, again, please call five zero three nine six six four one zero one. Speakers will be timed and limited to three minutes. Your time will begin after you clearly state your name, and please spell your last name. Please state whether you are in support or against the application, or if you are neutral or take no position, but just want to provide comment or ask questions. You'll be given thirty minutes second, thirty-second warning to wrap up your testimony. So, if there's thirty second, when there's thirty seconds left to the testimony, you will hear Doreen yelling thirty seconds. So, um, so please do not repeat testimony offered by yourself or earlier witnesses. The planning commission members are paying close attention to testimony in the hearing, and we need to allow time for everybody who wants to testify to be able to testify. Repeating testimony provided by others just delays the hearing and takes time away from others. This is not a popularity contest. The decision does not depend on how many people feel one way or the other. It is perfectly acceptable if you just want to say, I agree with what Ms. X said previously. That, that will save everybody time. So, as a reminder, the only issue before the planning commission is whether the application does or does not comply with the applicable approval or review criteria. If the application does comply with the criteria or can comply through conditions of approval, the planning commission must recommend its approval to the city council. On the other hand, if the application does not comply with the applicable criteria or the conditions of approval are not sufficient, the planning commission must recommend its denial to the city council. So, all right. So, Kealan, good evening.
Good evening. Yes, we have sixteen callers right now in the queue.
Sixteen. Okay, great. So, let's bring on the first caller, please. Good evening, caller.
First caller is Lindsay.
Good evening, Lindsay. Please state your name and spell your last name if you can, and you will, your time will start after, after that.
Hi, yes, my name is Lindsay. My last name is Ike, E.I.C.K. I live in this neighborhood, and I know that it's been stated multiple times that there is not going to be a significant increase in traffic. But I don't quite understand why there needs to be increased access on Ninety Second, which is a neighborhood. It's quiet. Lots of people walk on the streets. Their kids run in the streets, or they play across, the houses have families that play across the streets. And I'm not really interested in having an increase in traffic, even if they are on off-times, go through those streets. We also have an elementary school nearby where quite a few people are walking to school. And there is a biking program that they use Ninety Second to teach safe biking on that street because, for the reason that it is quiet and safe. So, I'm not necessarily opposed to Cedar Brook, but I am opposed to forcing traffic through a quiet neighborhood when we have a busy road, hall, that could be used for traffic going in and out in any sort of service vehicle.
Thank you. Before you go, Lindsay, commissioners, do we have any questions for the caller? I see none. So, thank you again, Lindsay. The staff and applicant will address all the public comments after we receive them. So, thank you. Kealan, please bring on caller number two.
Caller number two is Robert Rudy.
Good evening, Robert. Please spell your last name and state whether you, your position on the application and your time, three minutes will start after that. Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Okay, my name is Robert Rudy. That's last name is R.U.E.D.Y. I oppose the approval of the planning commission development review process tonight. But I want to say first of all, good evening, Tigard Planning Commission members and planning department staff. Apparently, the developer and their legal representative took an extensive amount of time beyond their allotted five minutes. Hopefully, it will all be the same accommodation in event my testimony takes a few moments longer than the allotted three-minute public testimony timeline. First of all, I wish to thank all of you for the opportunity to provide verbal testimony tonight in opposition to the planning commission's approval of the Cedar Brook Senior Care Facility's zoning change, city annexation, and development application as a thirty-two-year resident of Tigard and thirty-year property owner on testifying tonight regarding a factual violation of and within the city's staff report. Section four titled "Public Comments," which is before you tonight. This is in addition to my multiple written testimonies partially submitted to you by the city staff at this point in time. The words "partially submitted" being the problem. My verbal testimony tonight is specific to the city's pre-application process and developer's due diligence nonconformance with both the pre-application requirements and the required developer's affidavit of compliance. With, uh, nonconformance with both the pre-application requirements and the required developer's affidavit of compliance with it, with the Tigard Development Review Protocols. Here's the issue. My verbal testimonies began on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty. A written testimony is four days subsequent to that neighborhood meeting, with my email written testimonies beginning on August thirtieth, twenty twenty, roughly a year and a half ago. And as reflected on pages eighty-two and eighty-three within the current staff report, that development pre-application neighborhood meeting was held by Lenity Architects' senior land use specialist, Sam Thomas. And attached to that email was a markup of their planned development site plan. That site plan markup is not included within the staff report in front of you currently. When prompted by Ms. Lindor this past December twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, as reflected on page seventy-nine of the current staff report, she reflected that she had not received any of my verbal comments, notes from the prior August twenty twenty neighborhood meeting, nor my follow-up email, written testimony, and its markups with the site plan attached to that email, written testimony, which was provided as a confirmation of my verbal comments and concerns presented towards you prior. This appears to have been a direct violation of the City of Tigard's protocol for development review content requirement by the city as related to the subject developer. The twenty twenty neighborhood meeting written testimony was eventually entered into the record at a point in time following my contact with Ms. Lindor on December twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, just prior to the assembly of the staff report in front of you. However, that testimony remains non-inclusive of the prior site plan markup attachment that accompanied the original testimony in August twenty twenty. Hence, the staff report is incomplete and non-conforming to the City Tigard Development Review Protocols, and therefore, the CFC Planning Commission has not seen the entire record yet. In conclusion, the factual accounting of the events and plague journey of my formal verbal and written testimonies reflects a bad faith effort by the subject developer proposal team, therein being grounds for denial of approval for this development applicant. Additionally, this respondent formally requests a two-week extension to keeping the record open for additional comment, clarification of testimonies presented to date, and the developer response to the opposing testimonies presented in the planning commission review and uptake prior to the planning commission voting on the matter shortly thereafter. And thank you for the opportunity to testify tonight in opposition to the approval of the development application for you. If you'd like to know more regarding why I live across town from it, you had to pose it, you can ask me, and I'll share that also.
Thirty seconds is up.
President, who are you muted?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Robert. Perfect, three minutes, I was saying. So, commissioners, do we have any questions for Robert at this time? I see none. So, thank you, Robert. I noted your two, your extension, request for extension, and we will address that after we receive all the public comment tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Yep, I used to live in that neighborhood.
All right. So, Kealan, may I have caller number three, please?
Number three is Diane Bowman.
Good evening, Diane.
Hello.
So, so please, uh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Please, uh, spell your last name and state what your position on the application. And after you have done that, you have three minutes. Thank you.
So, my name is Diane Bowman, and it's B.O.W.M.A.N. And I am a- And I am opposed to the to the development. Um I would like to say that I've lived at ninety-seven oh five Southwest Ninety Second Avenue in Metzger neighborhood since I bought my home in nineteen ninety. I'm a recently uh retired professional and I find this neighborhood uh to be very comfortable and pleasant the way it is. Um for the first several years after I moved in, the street in front of my home between Borders and Lehman was not paved. Um and there were many deep potholes which limited the most drivers to go under ten miles an hour. So safety wasn't a considerable um problem at that point for for people walking in the neighborhood. And you know, some of my primary um opposition to this development is related to the Tigerd City Code uh one eight point four one oh, which is concerning the negative impact of the development on neighborhood streets and safety. I I heard um the developers people speaking tonight about um presumptions about how traffic will probably be handled within the neighborhood, um such as drivers following Greenberg Road to the intersection with Hall and then turning into the property directly from Hall. Um from living here even more than thirty years, my prediction is that the amount of traffic at at the corner of Hall and Greenberg, which can be pretty heavy several, you know, through the day, people are gonna be finding shortcuts primarily down Lehman onto Southwest Ninety Second and then north on Ninety Second to, you know, get that three blocks to go into the parking structure. Um I'm also concerned about this stuff, the the presumption that not having a crosswalk from the TriMet stop um across the street from the facility will be a problem. Because people would be getting, you know, getting on or getting off the bus there on the opposite side of the street are probably not going to be that interested in walking from that stop one to two blocks down to the intersection with Greenberg and Hall, then getting back when they could just as quickly jaywalk straight across Hall, which is forty mile an hour speed limit, um which is a a safety risk. I'm very concerned about both of these things being misunderstandings by the development team, which is going to lead to a lot of lot more danger-ness and risky behavior. Um which is not good for anybody. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you Diane. Um commissioners, uh do we have any question for Diane before she goes? So I have one quick question Diane. So um so what what in your estimate, what's the distance between the intersection of Greenberg and Hall to a developed site? Is how far away that is?
You know, I'm I'm not that great with estimating distances, but I'm thinking it's a couple of blocks. And when people are getting off the bus and maybe, you know, getting close to late for work, they're gonna wanna cross Hall. And I also would be concerned with people, sorry.
No, no problem. Please finish your thought.
Well, I was thinking that also, you know, say if people are getting on or off the bus after dark, you know, which is likely at some times of the year, the walking, that longer distance to get to end of the intersection is also going to be to seem like a long ways in some circumstances, in the rain, in the dark. Again, that would encourage people to want to take the shorter route straight across Hall.
Understood. Alright, thank you Diane. Um commissioners, if you have no more questions, um let's move on to caller number four, Kealan.
Next caller is Kathleen Noonan.
Good evening Kathleen. Thank you for calling in. Would you please spell your last name?
Hi, hi. Sure, my name's Kathleen Noonan and my last name is spelled N O O N A N. And I would like to say that I oppose this development.
Please go ahead.
Um I live at the Brownstone Townhomes on Ninety Second Avenue next to the proposed Cedar Brook site. And I would like to address the safety and livability issues of our community, and and this is one of the reasons I oppose this development. Um Tigerd Code eighteen dot two ten C, this code outlines, quote, minimizing the potential adverse impacts of commercial uses on residential uses by carefully locating and selecting the types of uses allowed in each commercial zone, end quote. This development would greatly impact our community, creating adverse impacts. Over the last six months, seven brownstone owner owners have sold their homes because of the possibility of this development. This site is not carefully located, as this is a quiet neighborhood without adequate streets, sidewalks, and land to accommodate a building of this size. Code eighteen dot four ten C, quote, maintain the traffic carrying capacity of nearby streets to minimize hazardous conditions, end quote. This plan eliminates all of the street parking from the brownstones, forcing residents and guests to park outside of our community on narrow streets that don't have sidewalks, creating safety and hazardous conditions. Code eighteen dot two thirty states, quote, the purpose of this chapter is to provide standards that promote quality development and enhance the livability, walkability, and safety of the community, end quote. This development does none of those. This plan involves opening a back entrance, which is a direct route to their parking garage. Kittleson and Associates reported in their May twenty twenty letter that this would add an additional one hundred and eighty-four cars daily and that twenty percent of traffic would utilize the back entrance with eighty percent using the front entrance. If that number is accurate, that's a fifty-one percent increase in traffic through our neighborhoods on a daily basis. We believe twenty percent is a low estimate, as this is the easiest route to get into the parking garage and the closest route from Highway two seventeen. Also, code eighteen dot six seventy A states, quote, land uses and qualities will all contribute to create a desirable, livable community, end quote. This proposal does not live up to that standard. The safety issues for outdoor activities are a huge concern, as are the noise, traffic congestion, and traffic congestion. Many have sold their homes and more are considering that option if this is approved, proving this is not desirable. This is a community with families, dog walkers, and runners, and it's only three blocks from Metzger Elementary where children are going to and from school. The City of Tigerd's, quote, new vision for their twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five plan is, quote, an equitable community that is walkable, healthy, and accessible for everyone, end quote. This development does not line up with that vision statement for the city. Please reject this proposed development. I would also like an extension of this planning commission so that those that could not attend tonight can join with their testimonies. Thank you for your time. I hope you oppose and reject this development plan. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy for your testimony. Before you go, commissioners, do we have any, do you have any question for the caller? I see none. So thank you again Kathy. Um Kealan, please have caller number five, please.
Certainly. Caller number five is Vonda.
Good evening Vonda. Um would you please uh stay and spell your last name and state your position on the application? And your three minutes will start after that. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Vonda Makris, M A K R I S. And I am opposed to the development. Um I have been a member of the Metzger and Tigerd community for forty-two years. I am a homeowner in the Brownstone community. My property would sit directly next to the entrance of the memory care facility on Ninety Second and be flanked entirely on one side of the building, by by the one side of the building. Um first, I'd like to see if the property site appears to be too small when compared to the developer's intentions. Um while they try to state otherwise, they do not take into consideration the building placement, the parcel of land, how the project fits into the community, and the detriment to the neighborhood. It appears from the current design plan, the developer only cares about getting their design, I quote, needs, fulfilled and shows little care for the impact of the community and neighborhood. The proposed assisted living memory care facility will overshadow the existing three-story townhomes by at least fourteen feet, reducing natural light to the units, especially morning sunlight on patios and through windows. This will cause a severe reduction of the quality of life for many existing Brownstone residents and would likely cause an economic burden to an increased usage of electric and gas for lighting and heating. The proposal also places the gleam glamorous and noisiest parts of its operations directly adjacent to the front doors of several existing townhomes. Rather than designing a facility that would be respectful and aesthetically more viable to the existing community, the design team only focused on maximizing the land usage without any concern for its neighbors and current residents. While the incident loading dock and garbage collection sites are hidden from the frontage of Hall Boulevard, it places a burden mere feet away from the door, front doors of the Brownstone unit. Based on the applicable criteria, this unsightly feature would not reduce the visual impact of the to the current residential neighborhood and would not create a more pleasant pedestrian experience for these homes. It is unacceptable and disrespectful to our community and these homeowners. There also seems to be very little permeable surfaces to this with stormwater runoff in the plant. The current property is flanked by a small wetland on the south end of the property, which absorbs a lot of runoff. Other than paying a fee, there is no indication of how mitigation will be conducted and how covering this wetland will be addressed. The developer, the developers have not considered this, how this activity will affect the home and homeowners that flank this wetland, which would cause a severe, a serious economic burden on their properties. In addition, this property will also be a detriment to the property values of the homes in this community.
Thirty seconds?
The fact that the developer wants to place the entrance to the memory care facility on Ninety Second Avenue, which is a dead-end street and not on the frontage of Hall Boulevard, seems illogical and will place a significant burden on the residents of this small community. It will drive down our home prices and cause a significant noise, traffic, parking burden on any, on everyone. Such a large-scale facility will make it difficult for members in our community to rent, sell their homes, and the daily activities of such a facility would dwarf the viability, livability, and serenity of this slender for neighborhood. This developer has not even tried to be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you Vonda. Um commissioners, do you have any question for the caller? I see none. So thank you very much again. And oh wait, Commissioner Shook, please go ahead.
Yes, um thank you caller and 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 really thank you to all the callers so far. But I I have a question for this uh particular person or maybe even for the other callers when they call in. It sounds like um are are they opposed to all development on the site? So the other uh uh when the as the as the project was in Washington County, it could be a a very large multifamily building and in Tigerd it could be a very large multifamily building. So the people know that they live next to something that's zoned commercial and could be multifamily. Are with, I don't, it seems to me that they would be opposed to all development and I just wanted to know if what this caller feels.
I know for me personally, I'm I'm for me personally, I'm not necessarily opposed to having something developed on this land. I'm opposed to having access points that are outside my front door that are going to cause burdens on our community. So if let's say the property had only access points from Hall Boulevard and we didn't have an entrance to a memory care facility where children play, that's a whole different ballgame. Like they're not, they're trying to cram in a piece of a part, like, you know, building onto something that doesn't necessarily fit the aesthetic of this neighborhood and really places that burden on there. So I'm not a hundred percent opposed to having a development on there. I think it needs to be developed. But the way this property has been set up and how they proposed this development, I have issue with. If that makes any sense.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Vonda. Um Kealan, please bring up caller number six.
Caller number six is Michael.
Good evening, Michael. Thank you for calling. Would you please stay and spell your last name and state your position on the application and your three minutes will start after that. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Michael Neunzer. Last name is N E U N Z E R T. I am opposed to the certain aspects of this development, to clarify. Primarily the uh fact that the the de facto truck entrance is the montage lane cul-de-sac. Um I'd like to expand on my letter dated December thirty-first, in which I asked the planning commission to prevent the proposed Cedar Brook facility from using the montage lane access for commercial truck traffic. And in that letter, I laid out the uh the logic for that and the uh and the codes that it might be a disagreement with. Um as I pointed out, it is a de facto entrance because the new, the driveway that they're proposing is too narrow and curvy for truck use. Newest information from the developer includes a package of civil engineering drawings. One of them is C one oh three, which is labeled auto turn. I'm not sure what that means. This analysis allegedly proves that the Walton Valley Fire and Rescue Vehicles can use the proposed driveway. What it actually proves is that this driveway is completely inadequate for routine truck traffic. The vehicle, the TVFRE vehicle, which is similar in size to a food service truck, uses both lanes and part of the handicap parking to make it into the facility. This clearly shows that the only way for trucks to access the new facility is via the neighborhood to the south of the property and the montage lane access. I would also like to point out that the proposed project does not meet the Washington County Transportation Plan. The set, the streets south of the proposed development are nonclassified or local streets in the Washington County uh Transportation Plan. And the that same transportation system plan shows what a commercial or industrial road section should be, and it lays out the design criteria for the streets that carry commercial traffic. Not a single street south of that neighborhood meets any of those design criteria, especially the pavement widths and sidewalk requirements which are there to meet pedestrian safety concerns. So clearly, putting or allowing the commercial traffic onto these streets is a violation of the Washington County Transportation System Plan. So to summarize, as a result of the applicant's decision to connect Montage Street to Hall Boulevard with a narrow driveway, I urge the commissioners to block the Montage Street access to this property and make it an emergency access only. That is the only way to force the commercial truck traffic onto Hall Boulevard where it belongs.
Thirty seconds?
I'm finished.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Um commissioners, do we have any question for the caller? So so Michael, just want to be clear, your point is that the proposed entrance from Hall Boulevard is not adequate for truck. Is that?
That's correct. The driveway from the Hall entrance around the back of the building to the cul-de-sac is is not is not capable of carrying truck traffic on a regular basis. It's way too narrow.
Okay, thank you. Um so the applicant and the staff will have an opportunity to respond to your comment after we hear all the public comments. So in the meantime, thank you very much for calling in. So um thank you. Kealan, please uh bring up caller number seven.
Number seven is Charlie Daniels.
Good evening Charlie. Thank you for calling in. Would you please uh spell your last name and stay your stay your position with the application? And your time of three minutes will start after that. Thank you. Charlie? Hello, Charlie?
The caller is connected to the queue, right? But I I might just not be listening. Maybe they're on mute.
Last chance, Charlie. Okay, maybe we'll go back to him. So please bring up caller number eight.
Number eight, we actually have two callers on this line. We have Shayla and uh and the second person, but there's two people, Justin, um two people reading.
Alright, good evening Shayla and Justin. Please uh spell both your last names and uh stay your position on the application and your three minutes will start after that. Thank you.
Okay, I'll start. I'm Shayla Kotadia, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and you spelled my last name, K.O.P.A.D.I.A. I am against the development. I live on Ninety Second Ave. Ninety Second Ave is a part of our community and is used by all households on our street. This has allowed us to create deep bonds within our neighbors and the surrounding communities. There are eight kids on our street under the age of eight, and they use the street to play with each other. Others walking in the neighborhood with children often join our kids to play. It is also the route that families use to walk to Metzger Elementary. Currently, there are a lot of pedestrians using the street and very minimal traffic. Even with minimal traffic, my two-year-old daughter was hit by a car while riding a scooter. She was in the middle of the road trying to get off, and instead of waiting, the car decided to try to go around her and hit her and the scooter. Fortunately, she jumped the opposite way, was not hurt beyond a few scrapes. Had she gone the other way, she had been, she would have been run over by the car. This traumatic experience makes me extremely worried about this new development and the increased traffic. I cannot imagine ever letting my kids out the front door. They will not have the opportunity to communally play in our front yards. We won't be able to walk them to their preschool and next year to the elementary school, and we will not have the same relationship with our neighbors. We moved to Tigard with the hopes of a positive city life where we could find and grow community, and I believe this development would be detrimental to the citizens of Tigard, and now I'm going to pass it to my husband.
Uh, my name's Justin Krest, uh, K-R-E-S-T, um, and I'm opposed to this, uh, development, uh, mainly because I don't think the, the streets have enough, uh, uh, safety built into them. So I, I've turned on the ninety second, but for one, uh, at night, there's not enough lights on these streets, uh, to the point where I've turned on to Ninety Second, um, and haven't seen a person that was within like fifteen feet of me hitting them until my headlights illuminated them. So, one, at night, visibility is really bad on the street, uh, and two, there's no place, like we just described, there's no place if, if you're going head-on with a car as a pedestrian, there's not many places for you to jump off, you know, at, at the point where my daughter was hit, there was just a culvert, there's a ditch, she could just jump into the ditch, or a pedestrian could jump into the ditch to avoid a car. So there's a lot of concern around what would need to be improved on our street to allow for larger trucks, more cars, um, to be interacting with all of the people who walk and play and interact in our neighborhood, so, um, I'd like to know more about that. And, uh, although, I, I really like the idea of a crosswalk on Hall, uh, because that's really dangerous for us too, trying to get to Metzger Park, so, uh, if, if, if a crosswalk materialized off of Hall, that'd actually be quite an improvement. Uh, yeah, so, good bit, thanks.
Thank you. Um, I'm not sure, I call your last name, Justin?
Uh, it's Krest, K-R-E-S-T.
All right, thank you. Before you go, uh, commissioners, do you have any question for Shayla and Justin? I see none. Um, I'm really sorry to hear about what your daughter has gone through and what your family has gone through. Um, thanks, but thank you so much for calling in to express your comments. Um, all right.
Thank you.
Kealan, may, may we have caller number, I guess we'll still call number nine, even though we didn't get number seven?
Yeah, we're, President, we're going to pass through, uh, two people on this line as well, the staff.
Okay. All right, so callers, welcome to the Planning Commission Public Hearings. So please, uh, please first say your, both of your first and last name and spell your last name, and stay your position to the application, and you have three minutes after that, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to be going first. My name is Rachel Stoller, S.T.O.L.L.E.R. Um, I just want to make sure that the planning commissioner knows that multiple neighbors have not been able to call in, just so you guys are aware, so I, we do want to request an extension. Um, we live at nine-one-nine-three Southwest Montage Lane. I am opposed to the current development plan. I am not opposed to development on that land. I do want to grow our community, but the current proposal of having that through traffic through our neighborhood, as well as the loading dock and parking entrance right in front of our townhome and multiple other townhomes is what we're opposed to. Um, so I did want to clarify one thing before I start my, you can start my three minutes, which is, uh, there's an error in the staff count that they provided. They said there would be a fifty-one max staff, but that does not actually meet the current body regulations for nursing, nursing CNA and CMAs, because that shift changes, they have to have the previous nurse CNA and CMA, which are the nursing and, and medication assistance, present, and that does not account for those regulations. So I want the planning commission to be aware of that. Um, so, uh, a year ago, we were notified of a public hearing and attended the August twenty-six, twenty-twenty meeting. Um, as concerned residents, we attended the meeting with open minds, ready to discuss it, and brought up several concerns to the developers, which were met with hasty replies that were inaccurate, and also, um, a lot of bullying. Since then, we have consisted of over twenty-four households in this neighborhood that have met regularly together with the city, ODOT, the county, the CPO four M, Oregon's Department of Human Services. We've actively participated in interviews, polls, and meetings regarding that date, including the Washington Square Regional Plan update. Um, we want to make sure we're discussing, uh, these crucial conversations, and we're disappointed after multiple attempts to, uh, the developers that we haven't gotten any feedback except for this last week. They really have yet to, uh, reach out to us or even address any of our concerns, including the distance from the loading dock and entrance to the parking garage right in front of our front doors, literally five foot step back from our, from our, uh, property lines. Um, they even lied about the current land use and what the land could currently use for, and Sam Thomas had to email me after that initial meeting to let me know he was wrong, that he's never emailed anyone else at that meeting, and that is a form of misinformation, and that potentially impacted people's, uh, testimony or, uh, desire to, to further keep up with this update. Um, we also asked them to-
Thirty seconds for the first caller?
-locate the loading dock and the parking garage, uh, existing right in front of the brown, uh, brownstone townhomes. They said they would if the city allowed them, but Agnes Lindor actually told us last week that they never actually proposed that site change. They could easily make it more, uh, appealing and safer for the existing community. Uh, the Washington Square Regional Center update acknowledged that the land being proposed needs to be rezoned and not allow more than a three-story residential building that has medium in density. It reflects our community and how it's growing. Our neighborhood believes the current development site plan is ill-designed.
Rachel, please, uh, wrap up your comment if you can, please.
Oh, okay, yeah, and it significantly impacts the safety and the aesthetic of the current neighborhood. It also does not, is not supported by current research, indicating the benefits of increased green space and smaller infrastructure communities for the aging population. This is the population I work with, and I specialize in cognitive development, so I am more than happy to provide research on that, those, for the developer.
All right, thank you. Um, so before, so we have another caller, so we, we will count us to another caller, so caller, please state your name and last name, and spell your last name, and your position on the application, and your three minutes start after that, thank you.
Okay, yes, um, and before I do that, uh, Agnes, I can't see the screen, and I just want to know that you're doing a screen share with the, the slides that I provided. Can you please confirm that?
Yes, I will do that right now.
Yes, we can see that.
You, you guys can see the screen?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so you should see a black screen right now, and then I'll kick off, uh, and Agnes, I'll let you know when to switch to the next slide, is that okay?
That sounds great.
All right, I'm going to do this blind, but, uh, anyway, my name is Dan Stoller, uh, last name is spelled S.T.O.L.L.E.R., and I am opposed to the development. My name is Dan Stoller, and I live in the townhomes directly adjacent to the proposed development. Our specific townhomes' front door, living room, bedroom are directly located across from the proposed Cedar Brook loading zone, trash pickup, and employee parking garage entrance. Uh, please go to the next slide. Back in August of twenty-twenty, the developer held their required neighborhood meeting where they used the strategy of confusion with a tone of condescendence, a commonly-used tactic to make non-experts, i.e. us, the residents, feel lost and helpless. They spoke about the approval process in non-sequential order, provided inadequate details about what hadn't had not yet been completed to date, and misspoke about the current land use zoning. Even amid this shameful behavior by the developers, the neighborhood prevailed and did a decent job flooding them with concerns, none of which have been addressed in the five-hundred-and-fifty-one days since the meeting. The developer has also ignored more than eighty letters and comments submitted to the city and/or them by the concerned residents. They've made zero attempts to reach out to our community, who has met two to three times a month since August of twenty-twenty. With that said, I cannot sit here and accept this single meeting is enough to approve the proposed development and the supplemental meeting, and that supplemental meeting should be scheduled to ensure the neighborhood has a say in the direction of the community. Next slide, please. What you are looking at here is a version of the proposed development from August twenty-twenty that better highlights the impact to the surrounding community. There are two main concerns I have with the proposal. First is the placement of the loading dock, employee parking garage entrance, and trash pickup. Given the amount of noise that will accompany these three, three areas of the development and the proximity to my home, which is nine-one-nine-three, directly to the left on the visual, I am deeply concerned by the complete disregard the developers have shown toward my right to live in a safe and quiet community. Today, we live in a neighborhood where kids can run around without having to worry about massive delivery trucks from Cisco and employees of an assisted living facility speeding through their place of work. The second concern is the connection of this development to our community via Montage Lane. The developer has found a creative, yet drastic and intrusive way to maximize building space per square foot on the lot, abusing the existing public neighborhood streets of Montage Lane and Ninety Second Avenue for cut-through traffic. I'd like to propose not connecting the development to our community and instead keeping Montage Lane a dead end. Please move to the next slide. Here is the most recent version of the proposal from January of two thousand twenty-two. You'll quickly notice no concerns from the residents have been addressed, and a cul-de-sac has been placed as the connection point between Cedar Brook Strut, Private Drive, and Montage Lane. It's hard to believe this solution satisfies the city and ODOT's original plan to complete Montage Lane through to Hall Boulevard. Next slide, please. By definition, a cul-de-sac is a street or passage closed at one end. I would argue this cul-de-sac does not meet that definition, and is instead actually a very unsafe road junction, again, which, again, city code connects two public streets via a, a private street. For this reason, I believe this application does not meet the criteria for approvability. Next and final slide. So with that, I'd like to leave you with my proposal. Move the noise of the loading dock, employee parking garage, and trash pickup toward Hall Boulevard, as well as the memory care drop-off location. Disconnect the development from our community by keeping Montage Lane a dead end not accessible at all for the Cedar Brook facility, and build a sound-reducing wall around the entire perimeter separating the proposed development and the existing neighborhood.
Thank you, Daniel. Um, your time's up, so before you and Rachel leave us, Commissioner, do we have any question for either Rachel or Daniel? I see none, so thank you so much again for calling in. Um, the staff and the applicant will address all public comments after they were given, thank you. All right, so, Kealan, may I, may we have the next caller, please?
Next caller is Juanita Garnow, but somebody else is going to be reading for her.
Hello caller, uh, I'm, hello caller, on behalf of Juanita, would you please, uh, spell her last name and her position on the application, and your time, three minutes will start after that.
Thank you, Daniel. Um, your time's up, so before you and Rachel leave us-
Juanita, or your representative, would you please turn off the computer streaming?
None, so thank you so much again for calling in, um, the staff-
We're having an echo problem.
Hello?
Hello, would you please mute the computer screen you're watching?
Oh, so weird.
Much better, thank you. Would you please spell your last name and your position on the application, and you have three minutes?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Can you hear me? Okay, great, thank you so much. So this is Teresa Gibson, reading for Juanita Garnow. Her last name is G.A.R.N.O.W.
And your position, and her position on the application?
Her position is opposed to the application as, as currently designed.
All right, you have three minutes. Please, uh, please provide, thank you.
So, thank you to the commissioners for, for taking our testimony. The property that has been proposed to accommodate Cedar Brook Memory Care Assisted Living on Hall Boulevard contains several Oregon white oak trees. These trees are something special, and they are disappearing. The long-lived tree supports over two-hundred species of wildlife and pollinators, providing both food and habitat. They increase property value. The Oregon white oak provides climate benefits and resiliency, and they decrease fire hazard inasmuch as they are much less flammable than, than conifers. This long-lived species of oak grows nowhere else in the world but in the Pacific Northwest and parts of California. These trees are well-suited to our drought-plagued summers, and they are able to thrive in water-laden soil such as exist on the very property in contention. Less than ten percent of white oaks remain in existence since first recorded in eighteen-fifty, an increasingly rare tree. In our state capital today, one must obtain a special permit to cut one down. White arts, white oaks are a significant tree, as defined in the codebooks of our state capital, as well as an entire state of Washington. It is my understanding from their published plan, the developers intend to remove all vegetation. I am aghast that the white oaks are not even identified on this plan. All over the West Coast, these magnificent, magnificent trees are being restored and protected, and numerous communities are developing plans that place a high value on oak habitats. For re, this reason, I ask that these trees be preserved. In the book, Human Dimensions of Ecological Restoration, authors John Bliss and Paige Fisher state, "We humans don't just occupy ecosystems, we are integral components of complex socio-ecological systems." Thank you, sincerely, Juanita Garnow.
Thank you. Um, before you go, commissioners, do we have any question for the caller? I see none, so thank you, Juanita, and you, and representative for your comments. Um, so people, thank you. Kealan, so how, so do we have five or six more callers, or do we have more than that?
We, we have more, we, uh, we have eight more to go at this time.
Okay, so, um, so that's, that's, let's go, let's go on and bring up the next caller, please.
Next caller is Jan Erickson.
Good evening, Jan, uh, would you please, uh, sma, spell your last name and stay your position to the application, and your three minutes will start after that, thank you.
Okay, my name is Jan Erickson, and I, it's E.R.I.C.K.S.O.N., and I'm going to speak tonight about the city of Tigard's Goal XI for public facilities and services. Streets. The subject property has frontage on Southwest Hall, Ninety Second, and the street stub from Southwest Montage Lane. Upon development of the property, street improvements are required along the frontage, or the property frontage in accordance with multiple codes and standards. In eighteen-nine-ten-five-hundred easements B, utility easement, the city standard width for a public mainline, utility easement shall be fifteen feet unless otherwise specified by the utility company, applicable district, or city engineer. On page fifty-two of the staff report, it states, so that was fifteen feet on the easement. On the staff report, it states the development will require an eight-foot public utility easement along all road frontages out of the right-of-way. So, it appears that the city planning staff has chosen to compromise and favor the developer with their half-street utility easement standard in direct non-conformance of the- with their half-street utility easement standard in direct non-conformance of the city's development standard. In table eighteen two thirty zero four zero, page twenty-four of the staff report, setback section, the front is clearly labeled out as hall. This easement is required to be located along the frontage of Hall Boulevard outside of the required public right-of-way. Yet it appears to be excluded from the proposed developmental drawings. It does not appear to be shown on the site plan A one or civil design drawings. Am I missing something or are these drawings incomplete as submitted? In my opinion, this question needs to be answered before this proposed development can be allowed to move forward. What is shown on the proposed site plan along the entire Hall Boulevard frontage road and located at one point three feet from the road right-of-way is a rather large and imposing building. I believe that a utility easement is not allowed to be built over because that would prevent its maintenance and replacement needs. It appears that the proposed north wall of the assisted living facility structure needs to be relocated to the south approximately six and a half feet, per the staff report, page twenty-four. Reflecting that portion of the structure as the front and its requirement in the front. The proposed Cedar Brook assisted living facility is too big for the two point five-three site. As designed, the proposed facility is not good for the existing neighborhood and we appeal to the planning commission to look at the submitted documentation and then deny approval of the site development plan as well as the annexation. This is the right solution for the entire neighborhood and the adjacent community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Um, so I, I, I suppose you, your position on the application is that you oppose.
Oh, I am opposed to it definitely.
Okay, thank you.
But I think there's something missing from the drawings.
Got it. So, um, Commissioners, do we have any question for Jane before we, we, we let her go? I see none, so, um, again, the staff and applicant will answer, respond to public comments after we have received them all. So thank you again, Jane, for your calling in.
Okay, thank you. Okay, bye.
Bye-bye. Kylan, would you bring up the next caller, please?
Next caller is Stephen Perry.
Stephen, hi Stephen, would you please mute the computer screen? You are watching the meeting app? Hello, Stephen, can you hear me? The streaming is about a minute behind the call or ahead of the call. Hello, Stephen, can you hear me on the phone? Stephen.
Thank you, Jane. Um, so I, I, I suppose your, your position, not position, is that you oppose.
Oh, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
So to all the callers on, on, in the queue, uh, when you, when you, it's time for you to ask, please mute your, or, uh, computer screen for the streaming. Hello, Stephen. Hello, Stephen, can you hear me?
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Hi.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm trying to.
Can you turn mute the computer screen?
It's not doing it, I'm sorry. Uh, can you, can you, uh, you hear me?
Would you please mute your, can you mute your computer screen?
No, I know, I'm sorry.
The streaming is about a minute behind the call.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear me?
Sorry.
So please state your last name and spell it and.
I know, I can't hear you. Sorry.
Can you hear me now? Kylan, so that, that's, let's put Steve Perry at the end of the queue for now. Kylan?
Yep, will do and we'll, uh, we'll pass to the next caller.
All right, please bring on the next caller, please. Thank you.
Teresa Gibson.
Good evening, Teresa. Would you please spell your last name and your position and stay your position to the application? And your three minutes will start after that. Thank you.
My name is Teresa Gibson. The last name is G I P S O N. And I am opposed to the development as currently designed. My comments are about Tiger Community Development Code and traffic. I know that we've heard quite a number of comments about traffic, but I believe I have some new information to give. So Tiger Community Development Code eighteen point six seven zero, eighteen point nine one zero improvement standards eighteen point nine one zero point zero two zero, general provisions and eighteen nine one zero point zero three zero, streets, all sections and subsections. A safe street parking traffic study was done on Ninety Second Avenue by the Washington County Department of Land Use and Transportation during February and March of two thousand and twenty-one. This study determined that there were a hundred and ninety northbound vehicles each day and two hundred and thirty-two southbound vehicles per day. The proposed site and access plan would significantly add more commercial traffic through the existing residential neighborhood. Even if it were only the twenty percent, we actually think it would larger of the projected four hundred and eighty-four vehicles a day, this would represent a fifty-one percent increase in traffic within our neighborhood. But consider this, with the location of the loading dock, parking garage entrance and memory trains, chances are that a majority of vehicles are more likely to travel through the existing neighborhood than around to the Hall Boulevard for access. And we've already talked a little bit about that. With an undue burden being placed on the neighborhood streets and the facility address being located on Hall Boulevard, the proposed, proposed facility should be limited to access off Hall Boulevard only and the existing residential neighborhood should be separated from this commercial building in order to maintain our existing street safety, livability and walkability. Um, I'd just like to point out that while the developer has discussed improvements to Ninety Second at Montage, they've talked about improvements that are only at Ninety Second and Montage. The segment of Ninety Second from Montage to Lehman and to Coral are all part of unincorporated Washington County where there are no sidewalks and very few streetlights. So that's the area that we are particularly concerned about because there is no, um, plans from the developer about how they would improve that segment because they continue to say that there would be only a minimum of traffic into Montage um, and along Ninety Second. So, um, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Teresa. Before you go, um, Commissioner, do we have any question for the caller? So I have a question for you, Teresa. So I heard a couple of comments, including yours alleging that, um, traffic, a lot of traffic will go through, um, Ninety Second to Montage. But in order to get there, I drove there once and you have to drive through Coral and Lehman, is that correct? So that seems to be a very indirect way to get there. So, so would you help me understand your, your prediction or allegation that a lot of traffic will go through there instead of going from Hall? Because it seemed to me like Hall is a freeway, so Hall seems like the most direct way to access the proposed facility. So can you just help me understand why you think there will be so many traffic coming from that so indirect? Well, seemingly indirect to me at least.
Yeah, so, no, I, and I could see how if you just looked at the map that you might, might think that. Um, but, um, one, when you come off of Greenberg Road, um, there oftentimes can be quite a bit of traffic coming up towards Hall, particularly during holiday seasons and other times. I'm sure all of us have experienced where the road, the road traffic is completely backed up. And so therefore people coming all the way over to Hall, if they were getting off, say, two seventeen, they wouldn't come over to Hall when they could cut through Coral or Lehman down Ninety Second and in the back way through Montage. Um, secondly, commercial vehicles, um, as, as has been described already by one of my neighbors, um, commercial vehicles aren't going to be able to get in through Hall and make that turn just as a fire truck wouldn't be able to do so. And so therefore they would be coming, those commercial vehicles would be coming through Ninety Second rather than coming, um, off of Hall. So, um, you know, there is already quite a bit of traffic and, um, even if we didn't have the commercial traffic that we're, that we're envisioning, um, just having any additional traffic coming through there when people are shift-changing and other things would represent a substantial increase. Um, and we're happy to provide, uh, the commission, if it already hasn't received it, with the safe street traffic, um, study that was done in February and March of two thousand and twenty-one uh, by Washington County Department of Land Use and Transportation.
Thank you, Teresa. Um. Commissioner, no question. All right, so Teresa, thank you. Uh, we, we will move on. So nine o'clock, so Commissioners, um, raise, by raise your hand, any of you want a five-minute break? Please raise your hand or we just keep going. Okay, so Commissioner Bren would like a five-minute break and I would appreciate that too. So, um, so now it's nine oh two, so let's take a five-minute, um, break and we will reconvene at nine oh seven. So Commissioners, um, please remember that the meeting is still being recorded, so please, uh, refrain from communication. So we will continue our public hearing at nine oh seven. Thank you. All right, nine oh seven, so the meeting will be ordered again. Thank you for the recess. Um, so by my account, we have fourteen callers, so unique callers so far. So Kylan, would you please bring the next caller, please?
Next caller is Jim Long.
Good evening, Jim. Would you, um, would you please spell your last name and you'll stay your position to the application? And your three minutes will start after that. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Planning Commission. I'm glad we're able to connect this, uh, today, but we're having technical difficulties. So my name is Jim Long, L O N G. Um, I oppose, actually, I'm speaking on behalf of CPO four M and previous mayors have been giving us five minutes to talk because we have more to talk, we're, we're better prepared for it. So can I have five minutes?
Sure, since you represent a group, five minutes during, so please give Mr. Long five minutes. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Okay, so we, we have, we have submitted some written testimony, which we stand by. But just to make sure, we're against the annexation and the application, the development application. It does not comply with approval criteria. I actually want to add approval criteria and that would be goal one, that citizens need to be involved in the total process. Uh, and they need to have adequate notification of the meetings. Uh, we agree with Robert, Diane, Kathleen, Vanda, Michael, Charlie, Shayla, Justin, Rachel, Daniel, Juanita, Rachel and all the unanswered questions that they proposed, which you as planning commissioners need answers to. The, the conditions that are outlined are not sufficient. For example, there needs to be a crosswalk. There have been people who died this month, a mile from there, near my house, uh, who died because there was lack of crosswalk on Hall Boulevard. Uh, very simply put it, the, the building is set the wrong way. Maybe it should be turned around so there's adequate access to Hall Boulevard. Uh, a, a real technical point I have, when attorney Wendy Killington was talking, all of a sudden there were technical difficulties and I couldn't hear her for a few minutes. I haven't been able to see the, the screen shares, for example, even, uh, I think it was Daniel had asked for some screen share, I was not able to see that. So there are technical difficulties that are happening tonight with this, which are on top of, of course, what happened two weeks ago when there were over ninety people on the call and they were muted. They did not get to testify. So unfortunately, there is not as many people who turned up today because they didn't get the notification. So I see there's lots of unanswered questions. So I see there's lots of unanswered questions. Uh, it's interesting that the city of Salem protects white oak trees. Why don't you? Uh, this meeting should be continued. Some people, like, for example, Stephen, he couldn't hear him. There were a number of codes identified, but back to testimony, I would like to uh, to read in uh, that the the oral testimony is different. Uh, there were, the CPO four M unanimously approved both motions to oppose the annexation and development. Uh, there is, this this decreases livability of a long-standing neighborhood, and it's not in the best interest of the city of Tigard. CPO also opposes the annexation because decades ago, previous annexations were did not support, have not supplied infrastructure, sidewalks, et cetera, that were promised. This is annexations in the seventies and eighties, and the city has not come through with them. So that's another reason we are opposing this annexation from the town of Metzger into the city of Tigard. Uh, so there are potential violations of the city's code, traffic concerns, and residential neighborhood and noise levels from emergency vehicles. There's also the letter from uh, from Ken Dobson, the attorney, uh, with a good case for why representation by the neighbors, he's not, the attorney is not able to be here. He's out of town, he's out of cellphone range, he cannot be here to hear this. So there's a really good reason for for a continuance. It seems like there wasn't enough notification for people. Uh, so as I say, there's been some troubles here uh, tonight with these technical difficulties, and I do hope that you'll be able to uh, get beyond that in the future. I I think that MS team is just not working for us. It's not working very well for the citizens. Uh, we did meet with the staff last week, and we were not totally happy with the answers we got. I think they didn't want us to vent to you that we felt very disrespected last, uh, two weeks ago, and uh, that unfortunately, you know, some of the, some of the language wasn't really letting us speak, was kind of condescending. So we felt like we weren't really well taken care of last week. So here, as far as Ken Dobson, uh, this matter, um, it should be rescheduled, and if you reschedule, I don't think that's going to be till April eleventh, because you need twenty days notification. So I think you guys need to get your your act in order, need to follow your own community development code. Uh, notice that the hearing should have at least twenty days prior to the hearing. Notice must be mailed to the applicant, all the owners, all the property owners of record, interested parties, any neighborhood groups, and such as the CPO and the affected government agency. And um, so the city here didn't give full notice on this, and it's a violation and prejudiced our ability to communicate with you. We need more time to look at this. You know, the the city hall still really isn't open. It's not easy to go down and look at the total application and look at the devils and the details. How many of you have looked at the total application for this building? It's an immense project. How many of you have seen it? Down to thirty seconds. Okay. There's also, uh, as far as the Tigard Comprehensive Plan, the plan is to develop a citizen involvement plan that ensures opportunity for citizens to be involved in all parts of the planning process. I went to the city website last week and even today before this meeting, and it was put together by a group called Bang the Table. Bang the Table says community involvement is, and community engagement is their imperative, and this is exactly what did not happen last week, and that's one reason we're asking for continuance. Because if you want citizens to be involved, you have to open the door and let them be involved. So so the Dolan recognition of the Dolan versus City Tigard at the Supreme Court, there's also some issues there that I think the attorney has made a good case for. Thank you. I hope you have, I hope you have questions, because you guys need to ask a lot of questions on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Jim? Please raise your hand. Nope, we do not have questions, but thank you so much, Jim, for calling in. We will address your concern and questions after we have heard all the testimonies. Thank you. All right, Kylan. Next caller, please.
Next caller is Sue Wirick.
Good evening, Sue.
Hi, this is Sue. My last name is Wirick, W I R I C K. And I would love to support that facility. I think it would be a great addition to this part of Metzger. However, the uh, vehicle access continues to be a big concern of mine. Also, I would want all emergency vehicles to use the Hall Boulevard entrance, uh, to have those go through the neighborhood would slow down their arrival at the site, but also the noise would be a huge issue because it can be any time of day. So um, I would want to be assured that all emergency vehicles would come in off of Hall Boulevard. Regarding the crosswalk, um, I would like to suggest that ODOT put one in on Ninetieth and Hall, and that would provide access to the facility, but also be far enough away from Greenberg. And um, this other side of the street is improved with sidewalks, so it would be a a good location. So I suggest that ODOT be contacted for a crosswalk at Hall and Ninetieth. And finally, could Washington County um, participate in street improvements on Ninety Second and Montage uh, to um, add some lighting? And if there's a citizens committee that would work on that, I would be willing to participate. So that's all I had.
Thank you, Sue, for calling in. Before you go, commissioners, do we have any, do you have any questions for the caller? I see none, so thank you so much, Sue, for calling in.
Thank you.
Okay. Kylan, please bring up the next caller.
Next caller is Courtney.
Courtney, good evening. Would you please stay and spell your last name and your position on the application? And you have three minutes after that. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My last name is Tricky. It's spelled S J O B as in boy, E R G as in girl. And I oppose the um, plan. I um, actually live next door to Rachel and Dan, um, in my front door, and all of my windows on the backside of my house face directly into the field where this will be built. And I do not oppose to something being built. Like, I think Rachel said, um, I want our community to grow. And when I bought this house six months ago, I knew that the possibility of something being built there was going to happen, and I welcomed it. What I don't like and what concerns me is, um, I'm not going to, you know, keep beating the horse about the traffic, but uh, that definitely concerns me. Um, it's already a scary neighborhood to walk in, um, especially once it gets dark. Uh, for example, when my boyfriend and I and our dog go for a walk, we cannot safely walk our streets without full protective gear, meaning I wear a safety vest, he wears a safety vest, I wear a headlamp, he wears a headlamp, and our dog wears protective gear. That's how dangerous it is to walk around our neighborhood without feeling like we're going to get um, hit. Um, I also want to say that um, in today's world, a lot of people use apps like Waze. Waze is a very popular app. And what Waze does is it takes, its literal purpose of the application is to take people through neighborhoods to get to places faster. And so by having um, it opened by Montage, which is literally right, you know, two doors down from my front door, that dead end, um, Waze will bring a lot of traffic through our neighborhood by default, because there is already a lot of traffic on the other streets that um, people would typically take um, to go through Hall. Um, I am also concerned about the fact that the building is going to be so tall. I mean, um, we, our building is already, you know, three, three stories high. And I know they said that it could be taller, and while I appreciate that they're not choosing to build it any higher, by it being only five feet away from my front door, this will completely eliminate a lot of my natural light. I personally suffer from depression and anxiety, and I work from my home, and the little sunlight I do get is very important to me. And so I would like to say that I um, really enjoyed Dan Stoller's proposal of moving um, some of the unsightly things um, and putting up a wall and moving back uh, the buildings so they're not as close to remove our natural sunlight. Um, but like I said, I don't oppose something being built there. I just think the community should be taken more um, into accountability, especially those like me where it's quite literally five feet from my front door. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Courtney. Uh, Commissioner, do we have any question for the caller? So I I do have a quick question. Oh, okay, Vice President Jackson, please go ahead first.
Uh, sure, thanks. So so I'm I'm somewhat familiar with the Waze app, but I've never really used it, and I was just curious. Were you saying you were concerned about the Waze app directing traffic through a private lot? Or were you talking about just the staff that would access the lot, potentially?
I think, yes, I think anybody who's going to go there, whether it's staff, um, and you know, as someone who uses Waze on a regular basis, there is even ways that you can, um, settings within the app where you can turn off main streets, so it only takes the backways. And so I'm concerned about staff because, you know, like someone had said, um, if they're running late to work and they need a faster way, that means they're going to direct them, you know, down Lehman or down um, one of the other streets and taking them in the backway, which would take them directly next to my house, um, off Montage, um, and anybody who comes to visit. So I definitely think that that could be um, a a big issue, because I know just as someone who uses Waze all the time, it constantly takes me through neighborhoods um, when I'm trying to get to and from lots of places all around town.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh, thank you.
Thank you. Courtney, I have a question, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
So you and a couple of um, public member, member of public have said that the streets are being unsafe and scary, um, but the applicant is proposing several improvements that's not there right now, like sidewalks and even streetlights and bike lane and wider streets. So in your opinion, those are still not enough to address your concern for your, for street safety?
Um, I guess my concern is where do they start and where do they stop? Because if they're only doing it on Montage and on that little strip of Ninety Second, um, that's, you know, that's a tiny little walkway. If it goes, I would be very, I mean, I've been hoping somebody to put in some sidewalks near um, our, you know, and throughout all the neighborhood, because there really is none. And I moved here from an apartment that had a very walkable, safe neighborhood with lots of sidewalks. So this is very different for me, and I never thought I was going to have to buy a bunch of reflective gear to go for a walk at night to feel safe. Um, so I, from the way that it sounds, they're only going to be, and and correct me if I'm wrong, because I I don't fully understand um, their proposal, and they haven't had any communication with us as the community, so um, I haven't been able to ask them directly. But I, I'm guessing they're not going to pay to have it go all the way down Ninety Second. They're only going to be working on the part that directly affects where the memory center is and where the cul-de-sac is. So if that is the case, then it wouldn't be enough.
Hmm. Um, well, um, if you can go to the city of Tigard public hearing website, and their plan can is is can be downloaded from there during, for the, for the, as a meeting material, so. So but thank you so much for your um, for your public testimony, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right. Kylan, do we have any more callers?
We have two more. Next is Nate, Nate or Nat.
Hello, Nate or Nat. Would you please stay and spell your last name and stay your position to the application, and you have three minutes after that. Thank you.
Okay, my name's Nate Blazak, B L A S Z A K. Um, I would say that as proposed, I am opposed to the application. Um, and just uh, since it was the last call, just previous to this one, or caller, that is, um, a little clarity on, you know, that the suggested, the proposed road improvements on Ninety Second, the half-road improvements would essentially do nothing, you know. The traffic, those, that little finger of Ninety Second um, wouldn't be serving, you know, the facility with, you know, by traffic. All the traffic would be coming north on Ninety Second, and then, and then heading east on Montage. So any, any road, any half-street improvements that happen north of there are of no consequence, you know, to address the traffic concern. So I don't know if that makes sense to anybody, but um, I had, you know, a couple of questions, and I mean, basically, it seems pretty obvious. The neighbors, the biggest consideration here, and I mean, I understand that the people whose, you know, townhomes are across from the voting area, I mean, that sucks. And I mean, you know, um, my my property is adjacent to this one as well, and this, you know, stands to drastically change, you know, my privacy and and all those, you know, kinds of things, so. Um, it's, you know, I'm not particularly excited about it. I do, in ways, you know, view this proposal as, you know, the less of possible evils. I mean, given the um, proposed height, you know, it could be a lot worse. If these were apartments, as was mentioned, you know, the traffic would be much higher. Obviously, old people don't drive much, so I mean, you're basically looking at, you know, staff. But uh, and you know, it it doesn't go unnoticed by us, you know, as far as the developer. I mean, we appreciate, I mean, given the fact, as one of the commissioners drew, you know, drew a clarifying question to, the fact that this could feasibly, you know, be approved by Tigard with zero parking spaces is almost inconceivable. I mean, it just seems like a weird loophole in the code, but. So you know, the ninety-whatever proposed parking spaces, you know, all that's appreciated. Uh, the big deal here is, you know, the access. We don't want, we don't want the the traffic in our neighborhood. And I'm here to say, I mean, the suggested, you know, and there's some confusion. People are saying twenty percent, and then there's five percent. The what, the way I understood it is they're suggesting that five percent of the traffic is going to use Ninety Second. And I mean, that's just grossly, I mean, that's just a completely inaccurate estimation. And it's been explained before. I mean, Highway two seventeen is to the south of this property. That's like the biggest artery that feeds to this area. People are going to be coming north on Greenberg. They're going to take a right on Lehman, and they're going to head north on Ninety Second. It's the shortest distance, for one thing, but it also cuts out, that route would cut out a traffic signal. So this five percent proposal is just, I mean, anybody who knows the real layout of this neighborhood knows that uh, that's an absurd suggestion. If it was the case, why even have an opening to Ninety Second? I mean, the solution here, and you know, when Daniel, one of the callers, was presenting his material, there was a, there was a bag on the presentation versus, you know, the audio, but it still happens that his last slide is what I'm seeing on the presentation. And you know, that's a good alternative. I mean, if the developer truly believes
Sorry, Nate, your time is up, so can you wrap it up?
Okay. Well, yeah, if, I mean, if the developer honestly believes there's only going to be a five percent increase to traffic, then why even have the road go through? I mean, that, you know, we, you know, it should be emergency vehicles only, period, because otherwise, it's going to be used as a cut-through. So that's what I wanted to say. I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you, Nate. Um, commissioners, do you have any question for Nate before we let him go? I see none, so thank you so much, Nate, for calling in. After everyone has testified staff or, and applicant will reply, so Kylan.
Hello.
Last caller is Steve Perry.
Oh, hi, Steve. Can you hear me now?
Well, hi. I I, first of all, before we start my clock, I just want to thank your IT guys. My computer thing is not working, and they called me, and so I'm on, I'm on the phone, and really nice of them. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Glad to be here. So Steve, welcome back. So please uh, spell your last name and stay Welcome back. So please uh spell your last name and stay your position to the application. And you have three minutes after you do that. So thank you.
Okay, I have to hurry. Anyway, uh Stephen, my last name is Perry, P E R R Y, strongly opposed.
Okay.
I think right now is what we need to do and we've seen a lot of things here this evening. And much as, much of which is a real commitment to the community from people. And I've lived here for, well, most of my life. I'm sixty-eight years old. My, my, I raised my daughters up here, went to Meskew, Fowler, Tigerd, like myself, I graduated from Tigerd. My grandchildren are in Tigerd and my daughter, my granddaughter, well, yellow, the youngest one, is in Meskew Grade School. They walk these streets. I've been here, I've built here, I've 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 built a home and so forth. I just wanna tell you guys, you really have to not only look at this development, but you have to look and 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 many of our contentious people that we're looking at are saying the same thing. Traffic, traffic, traffic. I can, I I I can go on all day long about our streets. I paved Ninety Second to build a home in eighty-four. I know about the community. I've been here. I came, I was an airline pilot. I commuted here for thirty years back and forth because I wanted to live here. So let's look at this. The City of Tigerd has a strategic plan vision. It says, set the standards for excellence, excuse me, in the public service and customer experience. Create a well-connected, attractive and accessible ability for pedestrian network. We're we're not doing it here, ladies and gentlemen, truly. We're looking at it. If you're looking to the down to Ninety Second and you're looking into this project, you're looking at a funnel. Traffic, traffic, traffic. I have, I have called two places that this company owns. Shift chains, it's a hundred people. Nobody's gonna be taking buses and so forth. I'm sorry, all the time. Let's be realistic. Anyway, these are professionals. The last, ensure development and growth support sufficient. I I don't see this. Why aren't we looking at this? Oh, I'm sorry, really? Okay. Uh well, anyway. Uh here we got, uh I wanna talk about assistant living. It says Oregon Department of uh Human Resources specifies this. That's not in thirty seconds. I have my timer on. Anyway, so structural requirements, licensed assistant living facilities. But this is under the federal codes. They have to have a kitchenette equipped with a sink, refrigerator and cooking appliance. All these units have that. This is a dwelling. It's it's not someplace where people are camping out. And one other thing before I
Steve, so please, would you quickly wrap it up?
I've got my timer on. Excuse me, sir. I just wanna, I don't wanna debate anything here. I have my timer on and you started me a a a time I was talking. So all right, it's not fair. I would just like just a minute to finish, if that's okay.
Yeah, as as quickly as you can. Uh that we'll appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, may I have the minute? Because I'm on a timer.
I'll give you thirty seconds. How about that?
Okay, here it is. Okay. The assistant living facility in Oregon must have a private bathroom, toilet, sink and cribless shower area. It also says that they have a they have a escape window which opens up so they can get onto the street and yard. This is from the Oregon Department of Human Resources. How can you have a four-story building up there? It's not. So anyway, I've lived, I I've lived here for sixty-eight years and and I'm 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 very sorry that you treat me like this. That's not right. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Before you go, Commissioner, do we have any question for the caller? I see none. So thank you. Um Kylan, was Steve the last caller?
Steve was the last caller.
Oh, thank you so much for calling him back. That's good customer service.
Yes, thank you very much.
So um so we have received all the calling uh public testimony for for tonight. Um so it's time for response from staff and the applicant. And by my counts, we we have at least three public members requesting a continuance. So um after staff and applicant respond to the comments, I will invite Mr. Tom Maguire to address the issue of continuance, since he will do a better, much better job than I can. But before we address the issue of continuance, would the staff or the applicant like to respond to any of the public comments? If so, please do so. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, Agnes.
Hello, Wendy Callington again. Would you like us to respond or Agnes, would you like to go first?
Um I just have a few things that I wanted to respond to. If maybe I could just go first quickly.
You bet.
Okay, great. Um so the first thing I wanted to address was Mr. Rudy's comment about um a, the comment letter that he's referring to was a comment letter that he supplied to the developer during the neighborhood meeting phase of the project. Um there was not a application, formal application that was submitted with the city. Um so technically, that happened before, so it was never part of the record. However, that comment letter was submitted with the applicant's um application package. Um so it has been part of the record. Um it's within the application materials that were sent over for planning commission to view. Um so I wanted to make that clear, that that comment letter is included in the record. Um just quickly regarding, uh there were some comments about protections of the wetland. Um as stated before, this is a jurisdictional wetland. The City of Tiger does not uh regulate it and we don't have the authority to. Um it would be through the state and Army Corps of Engineers. Um and then lastly, I just wanted to touch on, there were some comments about trees retaining trees. Um so the way that our code works is uh we have certain canopy requirements that a development must provide. Um the developer can either choose to uh provide that canopy through preserved trees on the site um or they need to plant um a certain percentage of canopy on the site. So for this site, it's thirty-three percent. And through planted trees, the applicant is providing uh thirty-four percent. Um for the service and trash areas, uh our requirement, there really isn't a setback requirement from adjacent property lines. The only requirement for service areas that we have is that um it cannot be located with within twenty feet of a street property line. Um and then the last thing uh was regarding the notification of the meeting. Uh there was proper notification uh provided prior to the uh January tenth uh hearing, which again was continued to February twenty-eighth and now to this date. Um as long as planning commission makes a motion to continue the hearing to a date and time certain, um we don't have to re-notice everything uh per the regular code requirements. Um and that's all I had. I'm not sure if Jeremy, you had anything to add regarding, I had um there were comments regarding traffic, stormwater access and easements. Thank you.
Sure. Uh thanks, Agnes. Um so first, I'll take um the traffic questions. Um so for our local streets, I I know there were a lot of comments regarding the traffic and the traffic distribution. So I'm sure the applicant's team will speak to that more. Um I would just like to point out, so from the Washington County traffic count that was referenced of about two hundred vehicles per day on Southwest Ninety Second. I would just wanted to point out just for the planning commission that taking that existing number, even if you were to add all of the approximately five hundred trips, um that'll be generated by the proposed development. Um that would still be way below for um the City of Tigerd local street. Um the design um on that street would be fifteen hundred vehicles per day. So even if all of those trips were routed through the local street network, that would still be within the design range for a local street. Um I would also like to say the applicant, in terms of the code criteria, is meeting our city code criteria in terms of the improvements along the project frontage on Southwest Hall Boulevard, Southwest Ninety Second, as well as Montage Lane. Um a number of the callers um spoke to street improvements and sidewalk improvements south of Montage Lane. Um so for those existing streets on Ninety Second, as well as um borders, I believe was referenced in some of the calls, those are existing streets under Washington County jurisdiction. Um so it would not be applicable um in terms of this development, but is also outside of City of Tigerd jurisdiction. I mean, we would have, be happy to provide the contact information in terms of um the Washington County Land Use Department of who to address those existing traffic concerns to. Um there were a number of callers that had questions about emergency vehicle access for that Hall Boulevard driveway. Um so the applicant has provided that auto turn diagram um showing um that the site, the circulation plan for your emergency vehicles is adequate. Um so both from a feasibility standpoint, but also in the conditions of approval, they'll have to get a final sign-off from TVFNR in terms of ensuring that emergency vehicles are able to access and circulate through the site. Um so that will be one of the conditions of approval prior to issuing the permit. Um Wanda had a question about stormwater for the site. Um so exhibit R provided by the applicant is their preliminary drainage report that addresses um those concerns that were raised um in terms of meeting the stormwater standards, both for water quality as well as the detention piece. Um so that 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 is addressed in that preliminary drainage report. Um in terms of Jan, there was a question regarding the easements. Um so I think there there are two different items that um may have been confused there in that comment. Um so there are standard easement widths in terms of clean water services requirements for your conveyance easements. And so that's for your public um stormwater that will be traversing the site. So that's one standard in terms of your easement width there. Um what she was talking about, I believe, in terms of the public utility easement um across the frontage, um that's for your franchise utilities. And so the standard requirement for those private franchise utilities is an eight-foot um public utility easement outside of the right-of-way, um except in the cases where you have a um zero setback or a reduced setback that is less than the standard eight feet. Um so in those cases, um the city does have um standards which allow those franchise to utilities to be essentially placed under the sidewalk within the right-of-way. Um and so that's common in these types of developments where your setback requirements are less than the eight feet. Um so I think that is everything unless the commissioners have more questions for myself on those those public improvement standards.
Thank you, Jeremy. I think that's on my, you addressed everything on my list. So very thorough. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
I do have one more question for Agnes. So several, several neighbors testify to the approval criteria of negative impact or adverse impact. So they are not really applicable approval criteria, are they? I mean, I couldn't find them. So.
Um I'm not sure what the the applicable criteria would be through the site, whatever the site development review criteria are in eighteen seven eighty.
Yeah, but I'm not seeing anything about negative impacts on neighbors. So, okay, just wanna confirm. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so applicants or Wendy, would you like to respond? Please go ahead.
Hello, this is Sam Thomas with One Eighty Architecture. Uh we have a few comments we'd like to address. I'm gonna bring up the color site plan to explain uh some of the loading concerns. So here's a colored site plan. Uh I'm gonna show that this is the access from Montage down to the underground parking. We have a loading area that's here. So between the neighboring townhomes, there's a five-foot landscape buffer. There's going to be four trees planted. And there's also the twenty-foot wide drive aisle before you would get to the loading area. And the loading area is also screened for Montage as well. And there's also a four-to-six-foot grade difference. So the loading dock would be below uh the adjacent grade of the townhomes to the west. Uh regarding the street improvements and sidewalk improvements, um as you can see here on the proposed cul-de-sac extension, we'd have a sidewalk that connects to Montage Lane on both sides. We have the eight-foot public access easement that circulates through the site to Hall Boulevard from Montage Lane. And then along each public right-of-way, we would have uh sidewalks, landscaping and then street lighting. And then for Ninety Second, we would have the proposed pedestrian walkway go uh underneath the covered entry to Southwest Hall Boulevard. Uh we don't have the street lights shown on this plan, but there is adequate space provided for them.
Where are they?
They're uh between the sidewalk and the building. So on Ninety Ninety Second Hall and around Montage Lane. And I'm gonna turn it over to Wendy to respond to other comments.
Good evening, Wendy Callington again. I will make this brief. Thank you very much to our neighbors, the commenters, to staff and the planning commission for everybody's time tonight. With regard to traffic, I think, I think there's some confusion and I appreciate it. And I think I I just want to summarize. Only five percent of the facility's traffic will use Ninety Second. That's what the only evidence in the record demonstrates. What the only evidence in the record also demonstrates is that that translates into two AM peak hour trips associated with the proposal will be on Ninety Second and only three PM peak hour trips will be on Ninety Second. That is what the only evidence in the record shows. The fact that there are other traffic users who now use Ninety Second is not a problem that is created by this particular proposal. The fact that Waze or Google or some other app is directing traffic to Ninety Second, that Ninety Second is a dead end, is not something this applicant can control. But with regard to the impacts of the proposed development that we're talking about, we are talking about two peak hour AM trips, three peak hour PM trips, and only five percent of the total traffic trips associated with the facility will use Ninety Second. You have also seen that this development will leave Ninety Second better than it found it. Whereas Ninety Second now is is feels dangerous and doesn't have streetlights, doesn't have sidewalks. On the frontage of this development, as Sam just illustrated for you, it will have those important safety features. The hall entrances, there was some concern that was expressed about that. They meet all city standards and in fact, the template for the internal circulation in that entrance was required by Talton Valley Fire and Rescue. The height of the proposal is twenty-five feet, twenty-five feet below the maximum height that's allowed in the zoning district. We don't have an opposition or a position adverse to having a crosswalk on Hall. The issue is, that's a hundred percent ODOT's call. And there are reasons to believe they may not be willing to allow that to happen. But I can assure you that the developer doesn't have any particular concern or opposition to it and is willing to run the idea by ODOT. That's not a problem. I think everything else has really been very ably discussed and responded to by your city engineer and your city planner. And I guess the last thing I want to say to you is, again, thank you. And your decision about whether you leave the record open for what we all know as the seven-seven-seven or continue the hearing is really completely up to you. My thought is that a seven-seven-seven open record period where, you know, anybody has an opportunity to respond to anything that was brought up to this moment in the next seven days. And then the seven days after that is a period of time for anybody to respond to the information in that first open record period. And then the final seven-day period being that the applicant is entitled to provide you with a final written argument, which we would like to do. I think it would be helpful to provide you with a roadmap. So our suggestion would be to do the seven-seven-seven period, open record, record responsive, and final written argument period, state law and the city code allows. But you're certainly within your rights, should you find it useful to continue the hearing. And we wouldn't take a position about that one way or the other and rather would leave it to your sound discretion. So unless anybody on the team has anything else, or you have any questions, I think we're, I think we're done. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you. And thank you, applicants and staff. So before we go to the question of continuance, commissioners, do you have any more questions? For either the, the staff or the applicant? Commissioner Brandt, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just, my curiosity about the traffic study. There's something going on with my computer. I don't have enough memory, so I can't open these massive files, so I can't actually read it. But my understanding, these are usually generated from the ITE. The ITE, the industry of traffic engineers uses very small samples from areas not necessarily analogous to the area where the post is going to be. So my question is, did we use only ITE data, or is this some other more local data that I don't know about?
No, the, the trip generation is per, Christine Connolly again with Kittleson and Associates. The trip generation data used for the study is from ITE, so it's national data from a selection of sites nationwide. And that's the, that's the standard practice for these types of traffic studies.
Thank you. Commissioner Shook, do you have a question for either the staff or the applicant?
I do. Thank you, President Hu. I have a question for the city staff. We, and maybe the applicant can mute their microphone. I'm getting some feedback here. We heard from the applicant, so I think this is a question for Agnes. We heard from the applicant that this, the project that they're suggesting or that they've, they've made application for on the site is better than, from a neighbor's perspective, the other projects that could be built on the site. And they mentioned, you know, they're twenty-five feet less than the maximum allowed height. And, you know, you could have some very large apartment complexes on there. So my question for Agnes is, is that true? Is, are the allowable uses on the site, what's the maximum allowable use for an apartment complex that the city would have to consider?
Yes, thank you for that question. So in the M U R zone, yes, the height limit is seventy-five feet, M U R one zone. And there is a minimum density of fifty units per acre, and there is no maximum density.
Okay, and, and if this project was, for some reason, withdrawn or rejected or not, not approved, and another applicant came along and they wanted to build an apartment complex, would you, would it be typical for the city to require that the building be accessed from that same ninety second? So you'd have to have two accesses, one off Hall and one off ninety second? Or is it not something that you, is that too hypothetical?
Yeah, well, it, I mean, it depends on the site layout, but there are certain access requirements for fire access, as well as our code in eighteen nine twenty. Has different requirements for number of dwelling units. If it's above a certain amount of dwelling units, it would be required to provide two access points.
Right, now, if you had fifty units per acre, is that what you had?
Correct.
So you're a hundred-unit apartment complex, somewhere around there, at least, in terms of a minimum.
Yeah, because the acre is approximately two-point-five acres in.
That's right. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Would the applicant like to respond or add anything at all to that question?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I think that staff did a, did a good job with that answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any more questions? Okay, so right now I will invite Mr. Tom McGuire to address the public requests for continuance, its implications, and what the commissioners should do about it. So Tom, please go ahead.
Good evening, President Hu and Planning Commission. And for the public, I'm Tom McGuire, the Assistant Community Development Director for the City of Tiger. So I, staff would concur with the applicant. We could agree to, we would agree with response of the seven, the standard seven-seven-seven. And for the planning commissioners, I'll just go into that very briefly again. That means that the record, the written record, as we, this would be not a formal continuance of the hearing. I think we can close the public hearing tonight. But we would open the rec, leave the record open, and that means for the next seven days, anyone could reply in writing to any of the testimony and of the evidence that's been presented and provide additional testimony and evidence. Then there's seven days after that to provide responses to that. And then as the state law requires, the applicant has the final seven days, the final week, to do the final response to that. So that would mean in three weeks, we would come back as a commission, and then you could ask questions of staff applicant again about the testimony that's come in and the responses. And then you would proceed to your deliberation and decision at that point. And I think, given the enormous volume of written testimony and that we've received, and we've gone over several hours of public testimony tonight, I think leaving the record open and doing the seven-seven-seven is sufficient.
And the Planning Commission does not need to vote on that, right, Tom?
You do.
I do? Okay. So I will close the public, public hearing and then ask the commission to vote, to vote on the seven-seven-seven, to leave the written record open for the seven-seven-seven format.
Well, correct. That's, that's our recommendation that you, you've heard from the applicant, you've heard from the staff recommendation that the, the final decision is up to the commission. Technically, if other commissioners have other ideas of things that they would like to be left open, that, you know, you can do that. But our staff recommendation is, is to follow the record open in seven, seven and seven.
And by law, we have to keep the written record open, right? Because the public request or is that, so, okay.
Yes.
So, okay, so before I close public hearing, commissioners, any last questions? As Tom said, after we received the written response and the counter response and more counter response after seven, twenty-one days, we will still have opportunity to ask questions. All right, so I see none, so I'm going to close public hearing?
I have one.
Okay, sorry. I closed already. Commissioner Robert, please go ahead.
Okay, one quick question for Tom, or maybe two. So what I think you just said was, we cannot move recommendation to the city council tonight. We have to wait for seven-seven-seven. Correct. We have a, have a multiple request from the public to, at least continue, I mean, to at least leave the record open, yeah. Got it. Second question, I think I had heard some consternation over notices. And I want to clarify, did I hear correctly that because it's a continuation, we do not need to send notices to all the people in the surrounding area? That's correct. Okay, thanks. The, the code required notice of five hundred feet to all adjoining property owners within five hundred feet in our, our interest list and so forth, all of that was taken care of prior to the very first hearing. And after that, that's standard procedure in Oregon. After that, as long as the Planning Commission continues the hearing to a date and time certain, we do not have to reclassify the entire list. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions before I officially close the public hearing? Going once? Going twice? All right. Public hearing is closed. So commissioners, now we're considering whether to grant the seven-seven-seven requests for open, for keep the written record open. Do I have a motion?
Okay, I move that we, I'm not sure what the right appropriate wording is here. That we hold the seven-seven-seven and not continue further.
So, so my understanding, yeah.
For annexation Z C A twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-one and for the site development review S D R twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-one.
All right. So Commissioner Robert has moved that the planning commission in case number Z C A twenty-twenty-one dash one, S D R twenty-twenty-one dash one, to keep, do a public written record open for the seven-seven-seven format.
Yes.
Tom, is that good enough?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Wasson, second. Commissioners.
Thank you, George Brandt. I'll, I'll third it.
Okay, so commissioners, please take a second, locate the raise him button button if you want to vote in favor of Commissioner Robert's motion. Those in favor say aye.
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 So all six planning commission attendants voted in favor, so the motion passed unanimously. So the motion passes. We will keep the written record open in this case and follow the seven-seven-seven format.
Excuse me, who, could I just? If you don't mind, just for the, we have a lot of people who might be on the phone or watching the box cast, so I just want to be absolutely clear what's happening.
Okay, go ahead.
Will be held open for any comment, written comment until Monday, the twenty-first, and I believe that's four PM on Monday, the twenty-first. Then the, the written record will be held open for another week to April twenty-eighth to allow responses to the information that was submitted.
Tom, you meant, you meant March twenty-eight.
March, sorry, whatever I said, March twenty-eight. Sorry, thank you. March twenty-eighth, and then from the, the record will be held open for the applicant to respond in a final response between the eighth and the fourth, and the Planning Commission will return on April fourth and complete the hearing or the meeting on the fourth.
And during that time, there's no oral testimony anymore?
Correct. The record is, the, the public testimony, oral testimony has been closed.
Got it. All right, so we will, so our next meeting for planning commissioner for this case is on April fourth at seven PM. All right. Thank you, staffs. Thank you, applicant. I will close the hearing at this time, so move on to the next item on agenda. There's nothing on the agenda. Next item on agenda is the German. So Tom, do you have any last comment before we move to a German?
No, I don't think so. That's why I took the other off of the agenda purposely this time. I knew it was going to be a late one, and then we were all going to be ready to, to finish the, the meeting. So, no, we won't pick up any other issue items at our next hearing.
All right. Thank you, staff. I know you put a lot of hard work in this case, so I appreciate it. Thank you, commissioners, for your long, long hours reading the material and today's meeting. And thank you very much to public, really, for your overwhelming participation. With that, I will adjourn the meeting. Good night, everyone.
Night, everybody. Thanks much. Appreciate it.
Good night.